Yeah, well, yeah, we're just downstairs when they started, you know, started the meeting. You know, past the budget, then we just upstairs.
I wouldn't create a time, it's like out of school board, I always wait in hang on that one.
This is our carousel of arts.
Well, Pine Grove School, if Facebook is to be believed, it'll be a bunch of.
Well, we'll see how that. I'm free, I mean, this is all.
Yeah, but they're good at the online school and on Facebook.
People said. People said they were showing their social ministry or something.
Yeah, I'm sorely disappointed in the church. Then bet someone else.
And he, and I all learned about it, he had to say, I need to speak about this, and then I'm good.
And that's what, and that's what's funny, I mean, small schools. And he, it's good.
And there's a bottleneck at the top.
Got to keep all those little kids from being.
Right, it's like. Most people here probably.
Hey, Robbie could've done it for two years and he was nervous and that was really sad. But I prefer this sound.
Stay tied.
I knew I'd get. But that's okay.
I saw that bring one in.
Huh?
I saw someone bring it in.
That may have been one of the county employees. I've got one in the.
No, they had on one of those shirts.
Oh.
They had on one of those. Nice. Chicken shirts.
I should have brought my long lens.
Or there, he's getting caught in traffic.
Yes, sir.
We've lost our camera. Huh? Yeah, so.
It must be made of plastic.
Huh?
Made of plastic to get a good metal protector, proper.
There's an opportunity for the president to sit in the witness box. Plug it in. Put the door in the center.
Don't go here, get scarring. Calm down, you have to stand up, but it's, uh, it's okay. At this time, I'd say welcome to everybody. Any announcements, turn on your side.
No, we should carry.
If anyone need any announcements or anything needed tonight? At this time, I'll turn the moment of silence, friends, please, over to the chairman, Mr. Hayden.
Come on. Call him south.
Let's play flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So you can view the dog up tonight. The fellow here, the owner of the old Pine Grove School, William. We're going to be in trouble here. Oh, it's going to be Harold, Harold. Is it Hawkins? Where's Harold Hawkins? Come up here, Harold. You're a microphone right there.
Go ahead and open it. Go ahead and open the public hearing.
Well, I didn't.
Just back it up.
Oh, no, back it up. Public hearing's now. All right, now. First thing I'd like to point out unfortunately is that we have in the Highlands paper on page seven, the wrong picture of the purchased Pine Grove Old School. That's unfortunate. Did you, did anybody realize that? Okay, so that's, that's misinformation unfortunately, okay? I am Alex Hawkins. My property is at 685 Peaks Creek Road in regard to Pine Grove School possible sale to Brother Solosong Senior Family, my wife and I are happy to assume the properties in our area. Welcome. As far as previous use of the schoolhouse building, I have not seen any activity in the past three years except for the voting precinct. I do not know the number of voters that utilize that precinct for their voting. Most people do early voting, I would guess. It would be because of the limited amount of parking space. I welcome comment if you have those numbers. Since this possible sale would mean the building would be used and maintained and the county would not have the expense in the future, which would be good. I would like to see the family keep memorials, past history information on site, and those who lost their lives in 2004 floods slide deserve to be honored in their families' acknowledgements. I am sure there could be another option for a polling place. I know of some if you need to know. Please note the picture in the Highlands paper was not correct, which I've already stated. We ask all commissioners to approve this sale unanimously without reservation. Thank you for this time speaking. If I need to get a copy. Thank you, Paul. Mary Ann Ingram.
Is it possible to get the line turned up from here? We can't hear back here.
How we doing now? You're just like my wife. She pushes me all the time, but I don't sleep well.
Thank you, Gary.
Mary Ann, you want me to tell you who you are again? Do you want me to announce it or?
I can do that. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shields, commissioners, thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. My name's Mary Ann Ingram. I live at 115 Autry Road and I vote at the Sugar Fork precinct, which is the little schoolhouse. It was renovated years ago and I have voted at that spot since 1996. And it is quaint, it is small, but it's not, numbers are not what we're looking at and not what I'm looking at here. It is the immense space that our precinct residents have to come from in order to vote. And yes, we don't always have the largest numbers to vote at our precinct, but we do have around 400 that are on the registries. And it needs to be open so that these people have an opportunity to come there and vote. We go all the way up from Peaks Creek, all the way to Gold Mine, over to Peaks Creek, coming back down to, um, what is it, um? On that road. Anyway, it comes on down, comes out to Highlands Road, goes up Walnut Creek and Buck Creek, goes up Walnut Creek all the way to the county line. So we're covering a lot of area and that is a nice place for our localized, for our people to come and vote. Number one, if you just have to sell that little space, I completely understand. But you're not giving us the residence because we had a community committee who used to take care of that location. And if you're not going to give us an opportunity to reawaken that and give us an eye, and give us an opportunity to help you maintain that space, that's unfortunate. But if you have to sell it, I ask two things of you. That you put it on a historic registry that it can never be torn down. It can never be destroyed or changed. Number two is that it is made available to the county for us to vote in. If you can do that in a sale, I'm all for it because I know that you want to reduce what you have to pay to maintain it. But I would like to ask the audience, who out here from Sugar Fork in support of keeping our little voting precinct? Yeah, yeah. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Bobby Holland?
Excuse me?
Are you acting up back there? Well, somebody put your name down. It's got a rock on it. Maria Holland, Hamhorns. Marcy?
Marcy's going to speak during the public hearing part instead of the public comment part. This is the public hearing?
I'm a skilled, okay. I'm a marking your office, Holland.
Mark me off.
Don't leave me though. Don't leave me.
Mark that down for the record.
Okay, good evening. Thank you guys for allowing us to be here tonight to speak on behalf of keeping and preserving and maintaining the old Pine Grove School for community use as well as a voting precinct for the Sugar Fork township. I am here tonight with a big group of people. I was going to ask them to stand, but I think everybody is already standing in the back because we have lots of people here tonight. But from our group here, we have four generations that are represented, represented from native families. Those families are the Dills', and this is not all of them, but Dills, Hollands, Mashburns, Tilsons, Deals, Woods, and Crisps. And all these families are native from Nice, North Carolina and have deep roots in that area. And that is actually where the Pine Grove. I don't know what that was.
That's all been saying you said enough.
But Nice, North Carolina is actually where the Pine Grove School sits. We don't have our own post office anymore, but on the mound, it's, it's still Nice and we all have deep roots there. So the historical significance of the Pine Grove School is incredibly meaningful to all of us. That school was built in 1912 and to my understanding, it's one of only about 400 of its kind that still stand nationwide. Is that something I'm doing? Okay. And so in 2006, an incredible effort was poured into restoring that schoolhouse and for maintaining it for community use and for the polling place. And those efforts included updating the building with bathrooms, adding a kitchen area, replacing the windows, adding a handicap accessible ramp and roof repair. The effort even included pulling up the individual pine boards that are flooring and sanding them and relaying them. And my husband and I were both part of that restoration effort as well as my mother and stepfather and lots of other people within the Nice community and Peaks Creek community. Of equal importance, a memorial was erected at the school for the lives lost during the Peaks Creek disaster of 2004. As you all may remember, five people died during that disaster, the landslide caused by Hurricane Ivan. So that memorial is incredibly important to the families who lost loved ones as well as the neighbors in, in that community. We did not learn until recently the disbanding of the original community club and that the Pine Grove School was turned back over to the county in 2021. So the people that I am here with tonight and some others that couldn't make the meeting are willing to serve as a new community club to oversee the maintenance and the upkeep and the use of the building by the community. We know that the old Holly Springs and the Scaly Mountain Schools have both been restored for community use as well as voting polling places for their districts. And we are respectfully asking you all to designate that the Pine Grove School be reserved for the same purpose and, and continue to be used for that and not sold into private hands. Because we all know that once it's sold, it's going to be lost forever for use by the community because once it's sold, it could either be torn down or used for a completely different purpose, turned into a completely different structure. So we want to be able to continue to use that and we are willing to pick up the torch. So we want to be able to continue to use that, and we are willing to pick up the torch and, like I said, serve to, to oversee the use of the building as well as the upkeep of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you leave that with us, Tammy? Does she leave her piece of information with us?
She wants to leave it.
Can you leave that with us? Thank you. Carl Jennings. Carl, you coming up? We've got to mark you now. Devin DeWitt. Devin, you here? How do they write these names, Devin? Hold on. Put my mark of Devin off?
Yes.
Lori, Lori Smith.
I'm part of this one.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a quick comment on this very topic that we're talking on?
Let me, let me mark one more. Maybe, maybe not. Let me just save this person for you. Julie passenger? Uh, we didn't, yeah, all right, Devin.
Hello, I'll be brief. My name's Julie Taster, and I grew up on Peets Creek. I think that the best history lessons are taught by your grandparents. And my first encounter with the old schoolhouse other than seeing it was my grandfather's history stories about how he went to school there and walked to school and had to leave there in eighth grade because the family had fallen on hard times and helped with them and the depression and so on. My second history lesson was a civics lesson that involved the old schoolhouse, and that was my mom because every single time she voted, she took us with her. And we got a lesson about democracy and freedom and the Constitution and how we had a civil obligation to vote every single time. And you know what? The very first place I ever voted was the old schoolhouse on Peets Creek, and I've voted in every single election since then. As a matter of fact, I would say that through the old schoolhouse, C4 plan for me, particularly in history, because I went on to get my bachelor's and master's degree in political science and become a history teacher. And I would like to ask you to preserve the old schoolhouse because I don't think she's done teaching history lessons to the kids of Macon County or to any of us. And so I would like to be on the board that helps to maintain her along with my sister Marcy, and I thank you for your time listening to me today.
Thank you, Julie. Chris Prower. Chris.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Chris Prower, and if I can look at my teleprompter here, I'll try and keep up. I actually moved to the Pine Grove community 24 years ago, so I'm pretty much a newbie compared to the generations deep you've already heard about from tonight. But my home is probably the home that has the most direct view of the Pine Grove School. In fact, I'm the one that frequently will call the county to let them know that someone left a light on after the voting's been done or an event's finished. It's became really clear to me when I first moved there how important this building was to the community. Not only did that location serve as the case of 12, going all the way back to 1855, all the way until 1949, according to the sign that's on the building, but that location, once it fell into disrepair, got the whole community bond together. They raised funds, and as you've already heard, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears were put into refurbishing that building to get it in the good condition that it is now. It obviously has served a long time. I've been voting there for 24 years. I've attended community meetings there. I've attended a few small community theater plays there. Clearly, it has its historical significance to this community. It also serves as a solemn reminder to the Peets Creek disaster of 2004, as you've heard, as that school overlooks the river where most of the debris and unfortunately a few bodies float down. I can't fault the developer for coming and making an unsolicited offer to the county to buy that property, but I do think it's important as county commissioners that you also think about it for the responsibility towards the community in regards to the significance that it has historically and culturally as well as just for community needs. Obviously, we can't stop you from selling it, though I think it has been quite a bit of a shock to us when most of us picked it up from the Southern Scoop online or, as I say, the Highlands paper, which had some confusing information in it. It certainly would be great if you listened to the neighbors here in this community as they share their stories, and please consider carefully if this would be a good sale for the county. I understand it's important to control costs. I understand there probably is some maintenance issues with that building. I'm happy to hear that there's some people already offering that there might be a group there that would be able to look after it. Sign me up. I live right across it, and I see it every day, so I'd certainly like to see it staying as it is. I do understand the situation may have changed with the current offer, and I certainly would be very happy if they planned to conserve that building, preserve that building, and let the community use it. But I think you know, as soon as it's out of the county hands, any developer can do what they want with it. It can be bulldozed. We may be faced with a corrugated metal building, which is so popular around Macon County, but I would encourage you, if possible, let's try and maintain that building for how important it is for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Betsy Carson.
Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing public input on this very important topic. My name is Betsy Carson, and since retirement, my husband and I have spent the majority of our time in Macon County. My husband Rick could not attend tonight, so I'm going to read his statement. My wife and I have lived on River Rock Lane since the mid-'90s. We are both vitally interested in preserving what can be preserved that illustrates the history of the settlers native to the area. The Pine Grove School certainly is a key building in the history of the Colosseum community. Several other historically valuable nearby buildings have, in the past few years, been preserved. Together with the Civil War era farmstead on Peets Creek Road, the River Rock Inn on 64, the Colosseum Community Club, which before was a church on River Road, the school represents part of a nexus of history. They have been restored to an extent renovated. Other buildings and/or properties may be considered as well, though I don't know all of them. For example, the one stone house overlooking the Colosseum on the section, on Old Highlands Road and several houses along River Road between Peets Creek and the Colosseum School, now the antique emporium, would be more. The old Nickerjack Bridge, now relocated to the freeway, would have been another part of this history. I'm not sure, but several of the buildings along 64 between Peaceville Cove and Walnut Creek seem historical in nature. And of course, the Pine Grove Baptist Church since the, was 1886, might fit into this era of discussion here. I mention these neighboring assets because if the county could understand that taken together, they could rise a real physical and attractive loop of history. The county could revisit the idea of selling the school. Instead, it could be nominated as an asset for the county to maintain, not an extra property to be disposed of. The loop might even be worthy of a map that would encourage people to drive or bike it and thereby gain a sense of respect for how a whole community carved out its place in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. My husband and I would be happy to join and be a part of the community efforts to maintain this school. Thank you very much.
Next, Karen, Karen Reedy.
My name is Karen Deal Reedy, and I want to thank Chairman Shields and the commissioners for holding this hearing and seeing the value in getting the input from the public. A group of dedicated citizens contributed time, sweat equity, and money necessary to restore the old Pine Grove School. They raised money, accepted donations of time, services, and a tremendous amount of sweat equity into the restore, that restoration of the building. Since the closing of the school, the building was used as a gathering place for many events over the years, even when the building was in disrepair. And sorry if I sound emotional because this goes way back for me. But even though sometimes the steps, they had crawled into the building because the steps were all fallen in and, and the building was not in good condition, but it was utilized. When Pine Grove Church was restored, the floors of the church, I recall my dad building a fire and he puffed all his toes so that the church services could be helped there. My dad and his siblings were just one of the local families that walked there to school. Teachers like Merle Drummond were one of the, excuse me, one of the local, sorry, I lost my place. Were one of the local families that walked there to school. The teachers like Merle Drummond were instrumental in preparing children at Pine Grove to be successful. Some became farmers, storekeepers, bankers, doctors, retired from careers such as IBM and other professions. It is a place where simpler times, where children were taught and nurtured, being a part of where we are as a community in county today. I have sat in the school building alone with the thoughts of if these walls could talk. Since the restoration, Pine Grove School has been a wonderful gathering place for the prior old Pine Grove School Community Club, family reunions, showers, birthday, and anniversary parties. It is where the Sugar Fork precinct votes. I ask that you take into consideration that this property be maintained by the citizens again as a historical value, and our roots far outweigh any monetary gain from selling the product to a private entity. It is a place where our children and generations to follow should be able to return to the roots and be able to appreciate the contributions that came out of this little timber and schoolhouse. Thank you.
Karen, you were the last one on this list. Anyone else? Okay. Darrell, you don't, I've got you on this other list.
That's where I want to stay. I just want to briefly say, this is 2024, 20 years since this disaster happened. Many of you were not born then, so you might not know that there is a video of the thread of life and sin at the library. It will show you all the horrors of the hurricane back in 2004. And the key lesson for the commissioners to remember is that video shows how Robbie Holland and Johnny Keane, all the people who were saddled with the responsibility of getting people to safety, our whole county, traveling around Peets Creek, all the Baptists and churches, and this was an event that brought our county together.
Darrell, I put you on this list. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, I think I have to put an end to this somewhere. Motion to... Second. I want to say, thank you very much for your attendance. We will definitely take your comments into consideration, what you said. Just for a form of information for me, how many people were there at Pine Grove? How many people were at Pine Grove Baptist Church in the '60s? We know each other, right? Who else was there? Daddy?
My man.
And what did we have, Christmas? And the schoolhouse. Both ways, sir. As a vice president, I just want to, we appreciate what you say. All right. Want some clothes to say? I thought you were going to make a, a vote on this thing. No way. All right, closed meeting now, all in a commission session. Then what you make a motion to, motion to?
Second. Hall of favor, what?
Hall of favor closing. All right, thank you very much. If, we're another group, if some of you are leaving, we'll give a little space here for you to make way. And move on to the next.
We're not taking action on that.
No, sir.
We're not going to take any action on that.
No, sir, not for discussing.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss the Pine Grove sale, not sale property at this time.
Second. Which one, do you say over or not say?
Well, we're going to discuss it.
Can you repeat your message?
To discuss it or not discuss it.
No.
Henry, my motion was that to, for this board to discuss this and have action on the Pine Grove School.
Just a second, Mr. Anton.
Now we can bring this up for discussion. I'm curious if the Pine Grove community can pull together a nonprofit and get a 104 C3, pull the funds necessary to maybe put insurance on the building, to preserve the building, to make sure it's in safe hands. And I'd like to ask our attorney, how do we gain possession of the schoolhouse? Can you give a brief history on how we obtain title?
Yeah, so when they did the renovations in 2006, it was turned over to an entity called the Macon County Preservation Society, and that was set up, and it was set up as a 501 C3. And then I think after the renovations happened, it appears maybe that the interest in it waned, and so it kind of, it fell back on the county to keep it up. Then it was brought before the board as to whether or not the county wanted to agree, accept title to that. And so it did, and so we got title back.
I guess for clarification, we didn't buy the property. We haven't, you know, built the building. We obtained the building by default. Essentially, the community built the building for the community, and I guess I had interest in giving it back to the community the way it was intended to be. And there's no fault to the developer for making an offer on the building. It's a desirable property. But if you're asking for opinions, Chairman, I feel like the building should go back into the hands of the owners. As long as there is a proper nonprofit setup to properly oversee, you know, all needed aspects and maintenance of the building, just my personal position.
Does anyone out there know whether that is a nonprofit due for this?
There originally was a nonprofit when the origin, when the restorations in 2006 took place, a 501 C. Um, a 501(c)(3) was set up and Oral Howard Jr. helped us do that. But my understanding from speaking with, um, one of the board members who had turned the building back over in 2021, they let the 501(c)(3), um, expire. I don't know if that's the right term. But we would be very interested in getting another one if that's what we need to do. Um, additionally regarding the insurance or liability insurance. Um, I know what, I think the old Cowie School, the county still maintains that insurance, if my understanding is correct. But I have spoken at length with a board member from the Holly Springs, the old Holly Springs School, which is their community center. And their group, uh, through revenues from renting their space out for community gatherings, they pay their liability insurance. And our group feels like that we could also do that. Um, it's not such an important amount that we couldn't use revenues from renting out the building to cover it. And we're willing to pick up that torch.
Would it be appropriate if we gave you a period of time, say 60 days, 90 days, to seek legal counsel? See if you could obtain a reinstated nonprofit status?
Um, yes. Now, if I'm, my memory serves me correctly, I may be wrong, but I think it took quite a bit of time to get that 501(c)(3) completed. We could certainly, um, speak with legal counsel. Um, but I don't think, I don't know. I think it's kind of lengthy process. I may be wrong, but that was all 20 years ago.
It's Hall and while you're doing that research, uh, could you look to see how something becomes a historic piece? And, uh, let us know, uh, how that is. Because definitely it's a historic piece, in my opinion. And, uh, if you check into that when you're done the 501(c)(3).
Absolutely. One of our, or one of the people here tonight had already talked about that getting on the registry of historic places. So, yeah, we're interested in doing that.
Chairman, I'd like to say for the community, I support what you all just spoke about tonight. I think it's pretty unanimous. So just look for one, I support you all forever.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to retract my motion, please.
We got a motion here to retract this, uh, motion. Uh, agreement?
Second.
Just a second. Any further discussion?
If we don't get a vote out there, I just want to say, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for your time. Listen, it's powerful. Your presence is powerful. So I want to say, I think you're superb. And, uh, I think right now this board wants to give you guys adequate time to do some diligence on your own to look into that nonprofit. And, uh, if you wouldn't mind, please follow back up with us in, you know, 30, 60 days and at least keep us, you know, yeah, keep us engaged in this work piece and the, uh, in the process. Thank you.
We're going to move into the public comment. You're welcome to stay or, uh. Okay, we're going into the public comment hearing. We'll make sure that you stay within the five-minute rule. Uh, we as chair, we as, uh, as this chairman and as the board, we'll interact with you. If you will speak to us, we would appreciate it. Uh, at this time, Debbie Shields.
Mr. Shields, Mr. Kirkwood, Ms. Kirkwood, uh, asked if they could go before me. Uh, I don't have a problem with that. The handle stays long.
I sit here, she be number one. All right, Darrell.
Well, gentlemen, how has your vacation been? You've had four months without me. Not a sound or sight. And obviously, word is out that I'm here. Look at all these people who have shown up. So give me your attention. I have something that's new and important for you to consider. Look around at our hills. They are festooned with welcome and desirable neighbors who have come from our state. But they are taking up the view sheds. People who live here, who work here, who have families, who have generations, they don't have the opportunity to have a viewpoint. There is a place right above the hospital where a view shed could be built. I talked to the bank. It's been a year. They don't seem interested in taking action. But there is a guardian angel in our midst. Phil Drake, who has developed so many successful businesses here, owns the new property Scenic Bridge. If you go up that and one of you has, there are several sites there where the county could interact with Mr. Drake, come to an agreement and purchase or have given part of that property that could be set aside for residents. I'm not talking about tourists or visitors. Residents only to have cookouts, a family place where kids could play frisbee, where the trees and the formation of the hillsides form a protective enclave. So the parents could go up there with their kids, know that they're safe, have a very good time with the family for two, three hours, and then go about their business. I urge you to get together with Mr. Drake, figure out a way that this could work for members of the county and residents, and it would be agreeable for all parts.
Thank you, Darrell. We will continue at Debbie Shields. Just want to give you that. This is a red.
Hi, Commissioners, Mr. Shields, Danny, all of you below. Good to see everybody. Um, been a long time since I've been in this building. Um, most of you know me. Uh, I want to give a little bit of a different perspective on a topic tonight about the music and art programs in our schools, in our elementary schools. A little bit of a different perspective in that we all know that music and art is one of those things that kids either love it or you hate it. But when you're an elementary-sized child, you love it because you're not sitting at your desk doing math and you're not sitting at your desk doing reading. You love it because you're getting to use your mind and explore and imagine and learn all kinds of different things about different cultures and all different ways. I understand that the funding for, and I may not have all of this right. I tried to get as much information as I could, uh, in researching this. But that the funding for these, some of these, uh, positions may have been through other money from other pots. To me, it doesn't matter where the money comes from. This is a positions that need to be filled, and I'm going to tell you why. I'm a retired probation officer of 31 years in this county, in this building. And I've seen a lot over 31 years. Since I retired in 2020, I started substitute teaching. Oh my gosh, is all I can say. I love it. I love being with these children. I love being able to do anything I can to help child. I have seen with my own eyes what these programs, arts and, and music does for these children. I want you to imagine, you are a seven or eight-year-old and you're riding to school with your parents in the morning. And the only music you ever hear, not, not pretty anything down the road. But that's the only music I don't really like is rap. Okay, but the only music you ever hear is dum, dum, dum. In foul language, maybe, or violence, maybe. And that's all you're ever exposed to. Maybe you don't have a family that goes to church so you don't get to hear good Christian music. Maybe you don't have parents that like to listen to good old ladies' music or whatever. The only other choice you get to have exposure to other music and other arts is in your elementary schools. Because when it gets older, when these kids get into older years, it's choice. Do I want to go sign up for chorus? Do I want to sign up for band? If they all have it in elementary school, they're exposed to it. They get the chance to learn about Beethoven. Who, by the way, had they not, had Beethoven not had a grandfather and a father who was musically inclined, was both into music, Beethoven would have never been. Beethoven may not have ever got to be taught in our schools or the, the, the canteros that he, he wrote and the fabulous things that he's done. But I did do some other research and Rihanna, um, several famous people, Neil Armstrong, John Glenn, famous astronauts, John Legend, Adele, all of these people got starts in music in elementary school because they were exposed to it. If they're not exposed to it now, where they get the chance to see their potential, some of these kids, I, I see them come. If the music teacher's not there and I'm subbing for the music teacher, I'm trying to hurry, then they want to do their recorder test because they're so excited because they learned how to do their song. If you take that away from them, you're robbing them. You're robbing them of the chance to learn a recorder. At South Macon, they get to learn pianos. You're robbing them of the chance to learn the piano because they might not get that chance at home. They might not get that chance at a church. They might not get that chance to be able to experience what they might know. They might be the next Beethoven, never know it because they don't get exposed to it. So I beg of you to please find a way somewhere, there's always a way, to fully fund all of our arts program. Our art teacher, she does a phenomenal job. I have learned, just subbing for her, how to teach art a little bit and how to do it myself. I never would have known. I used to draw stick figures. Just subbing for art, I have learned so much. Please don't rob our children of this exposure to arts and music because it will be a travesty if you do. Thank you.
All right, all right, Gracie, what are you, darling? Gracie? I'm Gracie Parker. Pull that mic down to you there. What are you doing?
I'm not that short.
You're a tall girl.
Um, good evening, Chairman Shields and the county commissioners. My name is Gracie Parker with Y S Kids, and I'm here tonight for two specific reasons. My first reason to be here tonight is that I'm in, that, that my request from last August to take at least 25% of the opioid settlement money to put toward prevention and early intervention for us children specifically at the elementary school level. It is my understanding that are two, that there are two options or plans on the table. Option A and option B. Option A is missing the important component for early intervention and prevention. Option B clearly allows and encourages use of these funds to include, include early intervention and prevention, which would provide critical funds to start being proactive in regards to youth mental health and our mental health needs. However, this option has additional planning and reporting requirements, not an option A. Therefore, I am asking for the board to implement both options now, thus allowing early intervention programs to be put in place as soon as possible. I realize that it would mean some additional work, especially for planning and reporting, not starting immediately with prevention could be detrimental to children already struggling with the age, with traumas below the age of 13, as we do have some programs in middle and high school. I also want to stress with you about the needs for programs like music, chorus, and art to be part and remain in our school from K through 12, as these programs can help with self-esteem, learning and using these skills and many others as coping skills now and throughout their life. My upcoming rally on April 28th at the gazebo downtown focuses on continuing to raise awareness about youth mental health and very, very importantly, coping skills such as these. Thank you.
Thank you, Gracie. All right, Ms. Kennedy, you're next. That's Gracie's grandmother.
Okay, good evening. Um, this is my first time speaking to you, so bear with me. Um, I just want to follow up on a few things that Gracie brought up in regards to the opioid funding. Um, I know that, uh, there's been a lot of planning and activities going on last year when, uh, Gracie brought that request to you all. We had been told that we would be, or that you would try to keep us involved in the process and to make sure that her voice would be heard. Uh, I found out in January that there was a, a survey that was, had been sent out, uh, but we never knew about it. So once the survey was closed, of course, we couldn't provide any input. Uh, I don't know how the selection process went of who got the survey. I know it went to, um, all of the rest of North Carolina counties. Um, I know, uh, the numbers that I'm, that I'm aware of, of how much feedback was given is tremendously low considering of how many people live in Macon County alone. Uh, when we're talking about maybe, uh, 52 people that have, uh, knowledge of opioid or drug abuse, uh, some one-on-ones, I don't think that's enough information to base, uh, a final recommendation of how the opioid money is supposed to be used. Um, I checked, um, I did some checking myself and I know that every state signed an agreement. The Attorney General of each state signed an agreement with the, with the, I guess, the federal government or the people that did the lawsuits. And based on that agreement, um, I've got some points I'd like to make. One is, um, I've been told by some organizations, some local organizations, that the money cannot be used for youth mental health. I'm sorry, but that is incorrect because it clearly states in this document that, uh, that youth mental health is a big component and that early intervention is also a big component for this. Um, as Gracie had mentioned, um, the option A and option B, one is a much smoother process, which would be option A. Uh, the top, uh, points for that would be recovery and drug, drug rehab and, uh, helping housing and things like that for people that are trying to recover. But there is no intervention, no early intervention for our children that would be included in that particular package. I know one of the options would be to say, let's start with A. And then sometime down the road, after all, we have 18 years of money coming in, then we'll start with the, um, then we'll start doing intervention later. That would be a big mistake. We have children right now in elementary school through age 13 that need this help now. If we don't help them now, they will fall prey to self-harm, um, suicide attempts, uh, drugs, drug use down the road, alcohol use, uh, you name it. And one of the things we have to make sure is that we do not just continue feeding that pool. And one of the things we have to make sure is that we do not just continue feeding that pool of things. The other thing is, is I would like to ask officially is that we get some feedback on exactly who was involved in these surveys, if there are certain groups within Macon County or the other counties that were able to provide any input. Because, like I said, I know everybody wants to part this money. I understand that. There's a big need for intervention now for people that are needing help. But let's not forget that our children, because they are here, they are now, and they are our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Sarah Johnson. Sarah.
Hi, excuse me, yes, I'm Sarah Johnson of Amato. I'm here to speak in regards to the funding positions on the art and music in the elementary schools and in the, I believe, the middle school. I believe there's two positions in the elementary schools and possibly the entire art program in the Macon Middle that's on the block here for, for getting rid of. And I just want to advocate that I probably wouldn't have stayed in school if it hadn't have been for Mr. Franklin and Mrs. Lansford, and that was in high school. In middle school, I'm not even sure we had an, an art teacher. We did have chorus. But I just want to point out, if you want to help kids' mental health, you really want to get them early. You want to get them where their coping mechanisms are. Usually that's art, music, not for everybody, but for a lot of us. And a lot of Americans believe that kids deserve art and music in their education. It makes us, it gives us a well-rounded education. And while I was trying to find all these statistics to tell you, I looked and there is an international school in Thailand who actually points to the public schools in North Carolina getting their arts funding cut as a recruitment tool to get more enrollment for their private school, where they give an arts and music education that is well-rounded and most of the counties and most of the states in North America have, in America. So if you want to be competitive with the world, you might want to start thinking about funding your kids' education fully, not just sports, science, and literature. Though literature is extremely important. But art can teach you so much. It can teach you history, it can teach you math in ways that I could not grasp without art. And even martial arts, for instance, the manuals, they needed an artist to show people what they were talking about. You have art there, your seal, your photographs. You have, we have art all around us every day. It's extremely important. Thank you.
Betsy Mustay. I'm trying to give it the phrase roll.
You know my last name. My name is Betsy Based and I live in Amato. I want to make it quick because I know there's a slew of people ready to perform and I can't believe we've been waiting on this. But I want to let you know about a disturbing event that I attended in Highlands at the Macon County Public Library Board this past week. None of you were there, so I thought you might want to know what happened at this board. And first, I want to thank Mr. Shields for always telling us the rules of public comment. I am fully in support of public comment, obviously. And I'm in support of public comment at the library, which at some point in time may be able to happen. Because what happens when you don't allow public comment is that the crowd gets unruly. I brought a friend to the Macon County Library Board meeting because she was interested in how does our local government work? And she has wanted to start coming to meetings. I said, come with me to the library board, that's an easy one. I was so embarrassed by how unruly the crowd was in that meeting and how one of the board members that you recently appointed stirred up the crowd and spoke to the crowd when clearly, as you instructed, that we're only to talk to you, we're not to talk to them, and you're not going to respond to us. That keeps it nice and neat and clean, and we follow the rules, and we get heard. And I'm going to ask that you do that, implement that with other meetings that you have control over in the county. And I assume since you made appointments to that board, that you do have some control over that board in terms of implementing the rules when public comment becomes available. I was very embarrassed. And I was secondly embarrassed by a twenty-eight-page packet that got distributed by that board member of some truthful and some untruthful things. But it was distributed to the public in terms of being truth. And I just went to page three and some is truthful and some is not. And, and I think we should be careful when things are entered into public record. That board member asked that this be included in the minutes of that meeting and that it entered into public record. And if it was my board and I was in task with keeping rule in public record, I would make note that that was one person's opinion and not the opinion of a board or of Macon County or of you all. Because I assume that they represent you all. If you're not familiar with this document, you want to get familiar with it. How am I doing on time? Two minutes, okay, good. Okay, last thing I want to say. The kite runner, To Kill a Mockingbird, A Brave New World, The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn, Nickel and Dime, Catcher in the Rye, The Color Purple, The Holy Bible, The Giver, Nineteen Eighty-Four, and Flowers for Algernon. All of those books at one point in time were objectionable to a person and were banned in communities. Let's remember that. Thank you.
Betsy was the last one on my list. I see your husband's sitting there. You got anything you'd need to add to her comments? All right. Anybody else would like to say anything before we conclude this?
I would like to.
Say, say two. Ladies, poor gentleman.
Hi, my name is Jackie Cusostroga. I'm a regular's outfitter and me Franklin. We've owned it for thirty years. This is, but we have subjects, so I'm sorry for anybody. We've had issues with the public transit system, not bringing any hikers to us. We banged our head against a wall for about five years now. The first time I talked to Tommy Gilbert, he told me that the bus can't turn left or can't turn right, which is why they wouldn't bring people to us, which is bogus. We've got drivers on tapes saying they have no problem driving out of our parking lot. Then I tried to talk to the head of the transit system and she told me that we take them where they want to go, which is not ever true because they basically get dropped off at Main Street. And that's the only place they get dropped off, is outside of town. So I have to hire a shuttle driver, an ex-hiker to come and take people up and back from the trail because I can't, it's the only way I can get them to my store. So they're only going from White Instura to Main Street, and that is it. I have people that came in today who I also have a recording saying that when they get on the bus, they basically say they want to go to town, they're funneled into Main Street. That is all. And I just really think it's very disturbing, especially since one of those other people that had the other store used to be an ex-employee of mine. And the way that they started their store, which was a completely different story, was very unsupportable, but it's just a big slap in the face to us. The Macon County is just not helping us. By using this transit as a public transit system to get people and make it fair for, for everybody involved. Right now, it's just basically coming down the mountain, going to, going to Main Street, dropping them off. And then I have to like bust my behind just to get the business that I've built for thirty years to get into our town or into our store. So I just don't, I don't know how to make it fair, but it's, even the transit lady told us that, you know, we take them wherever they want to go. And that is not true because even though they go, we come to town, they have no idea anything about Franklin. They don't know, but there are two stores. They, all they know is they're going to be dropped off ten feet in front of their store, and it's convenient for them, and that's where they go. So the public transportation system is hurting my business that I have built for thirty years. And it's just, there should be a fair way. And I just ask you, county commissioners, to please find a fair way to make it fair for everybody. And I'm not, I have no problem with competition. Competition is great, but make it fair. Because I have no problem with that, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jackie. Is it Jackie?
Yes.
Would you give your name, full name to hang this lady?
Yes, it's Jacqueline Cusostroga.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mariah Rascatti and I'm a third grade teacher at Iowa Valley Elementary. My name, I sound familiar to you. My students and I have all written to you in January. Each of those letters were placed in your email boxes. And I so appreciate those of you who took the time to read and respond to our letters. Tonight, I'm grateful for the opportunity to remind you all of why art and music are vital in our schools for our children. Art and music are more than just an enjoyable activity for students. They impact the lives of students so much more deeply than pure enjoyment. I currently have two students that do not speak English. They're learning English each day that they come to school. But I believe they are able to release some of that pressure in art as they get the opportunity to express themselves in a way that doesn't require spoken words. In music, I have watched my two students gain English language learning through English songs as they navigate rhythm, beat, and English lyrics combined as one. Those students are now going home and actually teaching English to their families. Music plays an important part in language development. Reports of benefits for language development extend across early years in childhood as well as benefits for auditory skill development, reading ability, and language skills. In years past, I have taught students with learning disabilities that can make grade-level reading and math extremely difficult and sometimes stressful for the student. As we continue to cheer each other on and celebrate growth, no matter how big or small, I can't help but think of these students and how their eyes light up when they know it's art day or music day in activity. Here, these students really feel as though they can shine and show off their strengths to their friends, but most importantly, to themselves. For all students, they are able to also learn science concepts and art as they're exposed to various mediums and how they work together to create masterpieces. In music, students are able to learn about other cultures through music and the history behind some of the songs they sing. For children with learning disabilities, the arts help to support interpersonal relationships in the classroom and the recognition of emotions in their peers. For children with dyslexia, musical activities that involve both sensory and motor systems have been shown to improve auditory perception, attention, and reading disabilities. There's also growing research on the preventative benefits of art engagement concerning mental health. Activities such as making and listening to music, dancing, art, and visiting cultural sites are all associated with stress management and prevention, including lower levels of biological stress in daily life. Arts engagement can also help to reduce the risk of developing mental illness, such as depression in adolescence and in older ages. Participating in arts activities can build self-esteem, self-acceptance, confidence, and self-worth, which all help to protect against mental illness. Our children are truly so valuable. Art and music should stay in our schools to help support these children in their academic careers and beyond. Thank you.
I hear you just came into the school system this year.
This is my fifth year.
Okay.
Yes.
And you were the teacher of the year, following that.
Yes.
Congratulations. I saw a gentleman back there in the green hood. Can you get, get names, everything?
I'm trusting your point.
Don't, don't leave until I find out the last name.
Kevin Tussaud.
No, I know Kevin. The lady just left. All of that, don't leave without your last name.
Okay.
I didn't get it to first guy. All right. Kevin?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll keep this really short and sweet. I basically feel like the Macon Transit System and the Appalachian through hikers that have been brought into town is to benefit the businesses of Franklin. And I feel like the way it's set up right now, and my sister has just spoken, we have tried to go through different channels through the transit system to try to get the, the shuttle service to bring them on our side of town as well as the other side of town. And we're just running up against the front wall. I don't know what the solution is, but I do think, what I think I would do, this is kind of what I'm in favor of, is an alternating route. The shuttle goes up there three times a day. At right now, they basically drop them off right downtown. And the people that benefit from that are about, you know, they're right there. And it's a pure matter of convenience for the hikers. Ninety-five percent of these hikers absolutely know nothing about Franklin. The people at the transit have said, well, we take them where they want to go. And that's really not true because they really don't know where they want to go. It's a sheer matter of convenience. You drop them right off in front of another outfitter store? If I've never been to this town, that's where I'm going to go south. I need to re, I need to go in there and respond. Maybe I need to get a new package, new pair of shoes, whatever, new socks, new fuel, fuel, whatever. They don't even know there's another outfitter in town. So I feel like if the shuttle is designed to benefit the businesses of our county and this city, somehow we've got to devise a way that that benefits all of us. There are businesses on our end of town, Microtel, the pharmacies, the, the health clinic over there, which all these hikers also frequent. They don't even know that's over there, let alone us. And I feel like we, we kind of stood by for, I don't know how long shuttle's been doing this, for five years, I think, six? I don't know, Derek. But we've sat by long enough and it's time at least to be heard and, and for you guys to understand that I feel like there's a real injustice being towards the businesses on our end of town. And, and another thing that what we're seeing is, if the hikers do get dropped off there and they do find out about us, well, the only way for them to get over there is to call the shuttle, which often takes an hour or so for them to wait, jump on a shuttle and head over there. If the, if the coin was flipped on the other side and all the hikers were brought down and dropped off right in front of our store, I wonder how the downtown merchants would feel. I think they'd feel pretty left out. So I think, like I said, there's three shuttles that run up every day. I think it's eight-thirty in the morning, sometime midday, and sometime three-thirty, something like that. If we did one that ran the circuit and dumped them off downtown on the first one, the midday one dumps off over at our side of town, and, and also can follow a route, but at least gives them the opportunity, if they want to jump out at Three Eagles, they can. If they see Walgreens across the street, they can. If they realize Microtel's right over there, they can. But they never find that out because they're always being dumped on the other end of town. And if we were to alternate that every other day or however we do it, I think that might be a pretty good solution. That's pretty much my end of the conversation. So I appreciate you giving me the time to talk.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I'm breaking the rules just a little bit. I am the liaison to the Macon County Transit. And this topic did come up, asked pretty significant questions. So if you will leave your phone number or my phone number posted on Macon County website, I'll be happy to talk to you and tell you what the reasoning that I have received at the last meeting and what needs to happen.
Okay.
All valid, who gets your last name and first name?
I'm Mariah, it's my first name.
Come here, darling. I hear it in bed. Spill it to her.
My first name is Mariah, N-A-R-I-A-H. Last name is Rascatti, R-A-S-C-A-T-I.
Oh, you got it. Sorry about that.
All right. Make sure you get your name, darling.
Hi, my name is Jessica Doyle and I live on Mylansburg.
Hi, my name is Jessica Doyle, and I live on Mylinsburg. So, basically, I'm a parent, I'm a substitute, and I'm, used to be the Macon County chapter leader of the Autism Society. So I've worked with a lot of the disability in our community. I've seen music open eyes for a lot of kids who could connect with the world, could connect with their families, could communicate. And they used humming, to, used playing on the piano, used, they, some families don't have the ability to teach them or to help them with these skills that they want to learn. And the schools opened that opportunity to give them the chance to learn and to express themselves in a different way that they can't. And it's not just through music, it's through art, too. Some of them draw. My son is autistic and ADHD, and he couldn't speak until he was six and a half years old, but he can hum. He can hum almost every song, and that was the way he spoke, too. And today, when he's in stress or in a situation he just isn't comfortable with, he hums, and it calms him down. But without learning from his grandfather and other people in the community, he would have never been able to express himself. And my daughter, this year, third grade, has been really hard for her. And she took words as something to express herself and to connect with the kids in her classroom, because this year has been really hard making friends, and she felt like a part of a community. And she's been crying daily now that she's known that she may not have music next year and that she will not be in chorus next year. And that's what's gotten her through third grade this year. And I know there's many other students that music and art allows them to express and to make them feel or feel part of a community that they don't see outside of school sometimes because, you know, not all families are able to put them in sports or have the time. And so, you know, we need these teachers in the schools, not just for the people who are disabled, for other families, too, who don't have the support to be able to do everything and let the kids feel like they're part of a community. And I appreciate you listening to me, yes.
Thank you very much.[759.13][759.13][applause] Just want to say something really quick about the arts. I'm a big part of the arts. I'm a martial artist myself. I've seen firsthand what the arts do for kids. So I didn't want, I did not want it to go on the set and I spoke in here to understand that you do have a lot of support in this community and on this board when it comes to that, specifically from myself. I've watched what the music, I've watched what all different arts have done for kids. I've watched what the martial arts have done, obviously, for kids for years, and we've raised many generations, I think, and a couple generations at the class. So please know that you're being heard, and you will have some support, you know, on this. So that's just one, that's one of the things.
Thank you.[809.23][809.23][applause]
You're now head over your neighbors, so I have to give her a good night, again.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Matt Jackson, live off Paddington Bridge. And, yeah, anything in martial arts, it's arts. It's what it is. I didn't plan to come up here and talk, but I'm moved as a, I graduated Old County High School, triennial North Carolina, south of Hendersonville. Nobody knows where it is, but they have a great pizza shop. I promise you, it's a great place to go to. But we also had the number one marching band in southeast division, and we were one A school. We're the first class graduated of the hundred people, largest class they ever had. Music is personal to me, but art is everywhere, everywhere. And you can look, anecdotally, you can look at the people you went to school with, look at the people that were musically inclined, artistically inclined, where are they now? They're some of the most brilliant, brightest people out there that I know. Some of the most successful people that I follow are my old bandmates, my old marching band, my art student, our art classmates. There's no doubt about it. Art, if you want to invest in the future of this community, of this nation for that matter, art is where it is. We don't need gray walls and, you know, everybody be fitting little boxes, the same boxes every time. Art gets you out of that. Art gets you creative, and there's no better time to do it than when you're young. I played 12 instruments before leaving high school. Twelve instruments, mostly brass, so any of my music people will understand it's a bit of a joke. It's only like three or four valves for most of them, but a couple woodwinds. I'm almost 40, and I'm about, I'm about a year and a half in of trying to learn how to play the bass, and I am struggling. The brain just doesn't fire off as fast as it used to. But when you're young, that's the time, that's the time your brain is really going to grow from any form of arts. I took karate and taekwondo as a kid. I probably couldn't do a high kick to save my life, no matter how much I tried. But when I was a kid, I was great at it. It's when the synapses are growing and firing. Again, if you really want to invest in the future, arts is where it is. So thank you, guys. Sorry for talking off the cuff here.
Thank you, man.[961.13][961.13][applause] Let me ask Matt, out of the 45 minutes, are we still, where are we there, man? If you give it up in the total time? I mean, my computer may.
It's on, right?
Okay, we're good.
Can I say something like really quick?
Yes, just give it your name.
My name is Alora Higginson. I'm a percussionist in the Macon Middle School Band. And when I was little, I was, I went to Iowa Valley, which is where a lot of those kids over there go to, and there's a really great music program there that really helped me. And then, when I got into fifth and sixth grade, Ms. Huckabee, Ms. Jennifer Huckabee, who doesn't live here anymore, but she was great, and I used to only be able to play one instrument, and then as soon as I moved into middle school, I learned that once you moved into middle school percussion, you'd have to learn how to play all the instruments. And thanks to music and thanks to Mr. Graham, who has helped me through all of that, I'm now able to play every single required percussion instrument in the Macon Middle School Band. And as everybody else has said, music is just like a great fundamental for everyone, and it just has made me love school. And then, thanks to Ms. Huckabee and those early elementary school music lessons, I was able to get accepted into the honors band, into a try-in music honors society, into a far west honors band, which has multiple counties. And that was all thanks to the music program that was at Iowa Valley and for them that was in fifth and sixth grade, Mountain View, intermediate. And just besides music and things, it also gives you the ability, are able to meet your friends and meet new people. And I've just been able to meet so many people who have started music at a really early age and who that has became their entire career and their passion and everything. And I know I'm getting all technical here, but there are actually scientific research that says music actually does help your brain develop better. It helps you, you know, just get smarter in a way. And like everyone else, it's just a really good reason that helps you stay in school and that gives you joy, even when all, you may not love all of your other classes, but it just gives you a really good way to stay in school and helps you meet a lot of fun.
Thank you for sharing.[1123.13][1123.13][applause] The arts is one of the most, as you know, it's one of the most powerful tools I have ever encountered for mental health. Talking about mental health quite a bit, can, and one would understand just how powerful your tool that is in altering that when it comes to mental health is really powerful.
Hi, I did not plan to speak. Thanks, Emily Fields. I'm the school counselor out at Franklin High School. I actually worked at Iowa for the last two and a half years, and then I took the position at the high school, but I have seen the impact on the kids, and I know how important the arts are. And now that I'm at the high school level, I see just the impact it has on mental health. So I just want to drop that, and I think it's awesome that, that was kind of the leeway of me coming up here, but it would be a disservice not to speak on their behalf, so.
Let's see, Emily, you were a parent of the Air Force?
My parents were in the Air Force. And now they're teachers.
Your parents retired out of the Gulf of...
Yes, he met me this morning.
We met, yeah, that's right. Good to see you.[1196.13][1196.13][applause] Thank you very much. We're going to continue on with agenda. If you need a little time, why don't we stick up the singer? We're going to hang in here somewhere. We've talked about arts. I thought we already done it. All right, okay. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add library appointments. We'll get a care for a year. I'll do some meetings.
We'll put it under appointments. Item 13, item 13 B.
13 B. I'll put your name down here. 13 B. Need more additions to the agenda? Any adjustments of approval of the agenda?
I must have really been, Chairman.
So you made to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any more discussion of the agenda? If not, a vote, please, raise your hand.
Five votes.
All right. Now we'll come to the carousel of our...
Are you doing the adjustments, too?
Adjustments.
We need to remove a couple things.
Okay. I'm...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll remove item 9B.
9B.
Hope you would update from the Southwestern Commission. We'll be doing that next month. We'll also need to remove item number 11C. We're going to be discussing that at a later date as well. We're still back and forth with the state of North Carolina on that.
More time, Mr. Chairman.
9B is the first one. It's EB. EB, yeah. That's a misprint there.
What was the next one?
The next one is 11C.
C. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman. What was marked down there?
Yes, sir.
Dana, put it up for you, Dana.
I'm here.
There you go. Did you impart it?
All right. I just want to give props to all these little kiddos who have hung in here for this long because they have...[1401.13][1401.13][applause] All right, guys, I'm here tonight on behalf of Macon County Schools and the school board to present the Carousel of the Arts. Some of you will notice that's a throwback to my age at Franklin High School. And the presentation started downstairs. I hope you got to take in all of the artwork that was on display in the hallway down there. Those pieces represent our students all over Macon County. I'm going to ask Sam and Jackson to come up as we get started. They are going to be handing out gift baskets for all of you. Because there are items in these baskets that we will explain along the way through our presentation.
Dana, where'd they go to?
They're at Macon Middle School. I'm quite proud of them.
Thank you very much.
For the last year, our board has been hosted by, for our monthly meetings at the different schools in the county. And as we have entered the schools, we really had no idea what kind of a treat we were in for. Each month, we are blessed to encounter the talent and creativity of our students on a whole different level, and we wanted to bring a little piece of that to you tonight.
You're taking a t-shirt.
As a board, we have really been focusing on ways to showcase our students and our teachers that pour into them. What we hope is that tonight is just the start of an initiative of our board to be better informing you of the ways your investment in our schools is being used to create a very powerful ripple effect. When you invest in our students, you're investing in our families, and you're investing in our community, and we are very appreciative of that. All right, so tonight, you're going to see from a few, two of our elementary schools, Iowa Valley and South Macon Elementary, and those two schools have had full-time art and music teachers in place. You're also going to get to hear a little bit from Macon Middle School and from Franklin High School. So Sam and Jackson, why don't you come back out here and let's let Iowa come up and take this stand. One of the first items I want to point out for your basket is a handmade flower that is made by our art students at Iowa Valley. And now I'm going to ask Chase and Gavin and Jocelyn to come up right here, and they're going to tell you a little bit about their...
My name is Chase, and I'm a fourth grader from Iowa Valley Elementary. I'm here with one of my teammates, Gavin, to talk briefly about art and architecture. Did you know that this building was built in 1972 and designed by the architect Kyle Seabloom? The building is in a modern-style architecture and was not the first courthouse for Macon County. This is actually the third building. The first building was, was built in 1829, and the second one was built in 1881. In fact, the Coupa or Clock Tower from the second building is across the street from, from here in the garden area. The reason I am talking about this is because in art class, we learn about some North Carolina architects, architecture, and what architects do. We study public buildings. A public building is a building owned by the government to date its own. Our team, JCG, decided to make a museum. We, like real architects, invented the idea, made a plan and a model. Our building is a medieval counseling museum. We made our building to look like it was built in 1824, and it even has a kitchen in there which serves medieval-style food for people. We made this museum so people could see, go see, and experience things from medieval times. Jade and Chase and I had one building this morning, and it was not always easy. It took a lot of team, time and teamwork. Who knows, one of us may decide to be an architect or being here in Franklin.[1731.13][1731.13][applause] In my opinion, art class is better than music class. I can be creative in making all sorts of things. In reading a book, you have to picture and imagine someone with an idea, and in art class, you get to use your own imagination. Art class is a place where I can get out my ideas and be myself.[1761.13][1761.13][applause]
Iowa.
Okay, do I... Hi. Hi. I'm Jocelyn and this is my friend Evelyn. We made a library. We have an elaborate modern-style library and a program called... You saw on our tablet. But it was confusing and we decided to change it. The colors in our building represent how children see the world versus the way adults see it. The bright colors represent the children's point of view that is the cause of their perspective. The dark tinted windows represent the adult side because they're clean and simple. Our library is a library of happiness. And it is a Christian library and has stories telling about Bible stories and promotes love and peace. Franklin High School's parking lot inspired us. And we have a lot... Wait, what? And we have a rainbow parking space. We chose rainbow because it has lots of colors and represents happiness. The art community has wonderful art and people. We love it because it helps to express ourselves. It helps us take a different perspective on the world. We are grateful for art because everything has art in it. Your phone and electronics, you're usually looking at. Your clothes you are wearing and your hairstyles are even art, etc. My grandma Tracy Higginn inspires me and my friend in art. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
That was a great job. Let me have Cora and Addie.
My name is Cora Roller and I'm with South Macon. And this is Adley, Adley... And I have some quotes to share from music. "Music class makes me feel loved with everyone gathered and singing a beautiful song." From O'Reilly, a third grader. "Music means joy to me." From Naomi, a questioner.
Hi, I'm Adley Obrey from South Macon and I'm a third grader. And these are some quotes some of my friends wrote. This song was written just for me from Dana Kadawi, a fourth grader. "Music means everything to me. It helps me remember South Macon, a song and sing it." From Adley Obrey, which is me.
Hey, I'm Jackson. One of our special things about our middle school art program is that we are able to build upon the knowledge and skills that students already have from previous years of art and prepare them for the continuous success in high school school art classes. In this way, middle school art serves as a vital bridge between the elementary slash intermediate and secondary grade levels. This piece visually represents this bridge building and was painted by our art students over the course of several weeks. The two trees represent two student populations. On the left, flowers like bloom just as creativity blooms when it is fostered in early grades. On the right, this, this tree is receiving a multitude of birds flying over from the blooming tree. These birds represent the role of our middle school art program transferring the gift of art to take root and blossom in other trees. Inside your gift bag, you will find birds hand painted by our students as a symbol of its continued momentum within our schools.
Okay, and next we have Iowa Valley, our music program, here to tell you a little bit about some of the things that they have gotten to do since they have a full-time music teacher.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bennett and I'm in the fourth grade at Iowa Valley Elementary School. And I think we should keep music in schools because without music, everything would be boring. For example, say you are going camping and it is a very long journey. What would you listen to? Music. I think classes are important because without these teachers, we would not be able to learn about different cultures and music. Another reason is music helps kids who struggle with anxiety, stress and depression feel better about themselves. Without music, I would feel very sad, depressed and like I do not belong anywhere. I would be sad because I would not be able to listen to my favorite song. What I have enjoyed most about being able to participate in musical theater, club and choir at Iowa is singing fun songs and being able to express my feelings with everyone. I have found a place where I can just be myself. Playing a part of Furica and Lily Wonka is fun and exciting. I have been able to learn something new through this experience.
Hello, my name is Jason View. I'm a fourth grader at Iowa Valley Elementary. At Iowa Valley Elementary, we have so many cool ways to express ourselves through music and art. I've been part of musical theater where we get to sing, act and dance on stage. It's like being in our own mini Broadway show. In choir, we learn all kinds of songs and harmonize together, which makes me feel like I'm a part of something special. And there's, and then there's art club where we get to paint, draw and create all sorts of awesome stuff. I think I, I think having full-time music and art in schools is super important because it helps us learn to express ourselves, work together as a team and it's just plain fun. Plus, it lets us be creative and show off our talents. I love music and art because they make me happy and help me show the world who I am.
Hi, my name is Paisley Corbin-Rady. I'm in the fourth grade at Iowa Valley. For my entire life, music has been very important to me. I sing in the choir at Holly Springs Baptist Church. My mom and dad sing on the praise team and so does my dad, Uncle Kelly Corbin. He and my uncle Kevin Corbin started a Southern gospel group called Blue Ridge when they were just teenagers. They used to sing all over the world and do, and do you know where that started? In school. Ms. Parron has allowed me to be in the choir and musical theater programs at our school and it has been such a blessing. Music has always been a huge part of my personal life and I'm so thankful that I get to go to school and enjoy it too. Ms. Parron has put on plays and musicals like Wright Brothers and Pirates: Black Beer right now. We're, right now, we're working on Lily Wonka. I get to play the role as Mrs. TV. When I go to, when I go to music class at school, I feel like I am at home. I can be myself, I feel comfortable expressing my emotions and just having fun. Ms. Parron does so much for us. She loves all, all of her students and she loves her job. Her passion for music shows in everything she does. I am so thankful for Ms. Parron for all the hard work she puts into each of, each of us at Iowa Valley. And I am thankful that she chose me to speak to you on stage. Thank you.
Okay, yep. So next, I want you to look in your baskets and from South Macon Elementary students, you have some personalized items, like the wooden pieces. Those were made under Ms. Jessica Carpenter's guidance for each of you as a gift. And next, we are gonna have the South Macon Elementary Chorus here to sing a final song for you.
We, the South Macon Chorus, picked this song to share with you tonight because we feel that we can really relate to it. Often others try to make us feel less than and try to tear us down with their words. This song is a reminder to us that there is a place for each of us. We are valuable and we are glorious. We wear our white shirts and stand before you today tonight because in our school, music, music gives us confidence and a place to belong and do fun learning. Thank you for supporting us and thank you for listening.
This is me.
So, uh, here's some quotes. Art is a spectacular form to show expression by Olivia Shiloh Albera Boyl, seventh grade at MMS. What I liked about art class was that it was peaceful. It made me calm and it was a place where I had a lot of fun and I had a peaceful time. It's my favorite class because there was no stress that I could deal with. Alyssa, who's in seventh grade at MMS. I liked art because I never felt rushed to do my work and I was always nice to see you. And it was always nice to see the innovative origins of art. Katie Davis, eighth grader at MMS. I love art because it's fun and engaging and it's all for everyone to see it. Said David Williams, eighth grader at MMS. I love it because it lets my ideas grow. Said Riley Keener, another eighth grader at MMS. We thank you guys for the chance to come and share with you tonight. If you will look in your baskets one more time, you'll find your last gift from Franklin High School art classes. And we hope you enjoy our presentation.
Please don't take that away from him. Please.
Please.
Shelley, let you... You didn't tell you were getting ceremony dollars, did you?
I've been doing this for 25 years, coming to your board meetings.
Yes.
And I have never had a follow-up of this.
There you go.
I did not have this. Did you bring a gift basket? I did bring a gift basket. I'm not going to say who linked you.
You're in the gift basket. Hold it safe, Shelley. You get the last week out. You're on the watch, you're on the job. Hold it safe, I'm gonna give it. Patrick.
Sir.
Are you part of this?
Yes, sir.
You get to introduce them, right?
I'll be happy to introduce her. Let me hold it safe.
Hold it, Mr. Patrick. Okay, Patrick. Take a break for five minutes. We'll go wash our hands.
Yes, sir.
Hello, sir, how you doing? Yeah, I'm making it. Uh-oh, sorry. How you doing, Tom?
He came. Shelley, uh...
I felt like I was smoking out too, but four hours. Said he'd be here in a minute.
Charles Backorder, on. I'll say, you can't let Miss Black Gordon look like she's been actually been a musician.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's gonna be a pretty tough act to follow and I think that Russ isn't here to be the intermediary between us and that last performance. Gentlemen, you've heard quite a bit tonight.
Wait, can we pass the candy shop to you?
Thank you, Chair. You've heard a lot of passionate discussion tonight about history, about support for institutions, and support for children. I'm very pleased to announce to you the next person who's gonna stand before you and talk about all of those things together. A storied history of service, an organization that's dedicated to serving children and families in this region. I'm proud to introduce to you Shelley Foreman with Vaya Health, who's gonna talk with you about the child and family special tonight.
Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Patrick. Patrick is gonna help interpret questions. My ears were a little bit clogged up, so the acoustics in here are bad. Thank you for having me again. My name is Shelley Foreman. I'm the Community Relations Regional Director for Vaya Health. Vaya Health is a public agency overseen by the Department of Health and Human Services. And we manage Medicaid and state funds with individuals with mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities. On July 1, as part of the evolving Medicaid transformation, Vaya will also be managing Medicaid health and pharmacy care for our health plan members. So, for the last several years, we have been here to talk with you about an initiative that the Department of Health and Human Services had proposed and was just recently passed in the last legislative session by the General Assembly. And that was the creation of a single statewide vendor to manage Medicaid services for the child welfare population. And if I get this wrong, Patrick, let me know. So, for, in the child welfare system, and I think I started relatively smaller. It pretty much started out for kids in foster care. And then over several years, it evolved to include caregivers, siblings, and adults for those children in foster care. And then it also expanded to include adults, families, and children in the Child Welfare In-Home Program, which comes before the foster care system starts. So, we, as a LME MCO, which is what we are called, I wish they would have thought about this like, like, in 2000, that those acronyms were not really a good one. But we have been working very closely with our public partners for our 50-year existence. And since we have been managing Medicaid, we have really tried to work with our departments of Social Services to do a lot of the things necessary to provide that better support. The statewide waiver will really look at creating one single health plan. The General Assembly wrote legislation so that the people who can apply are those who are currently managing Medicaid in our state system. So it would be one of the four standard plan insurance companies in this area, as well as organizations like Vaya Health. So, after all of the work we've done for this many years in being a public partner, and the state did decide to do this, Vaya Health made the decision that we were going to work to, with another organization like us, a public agency called Partners Behavioral Health. And together, we cover 47 counties out of the 100 counties in North Carolina. And we were going to apply for the application. So, I am here tonight requesting that you consider supporting our application for this waiver. What will be different? And I think that's a good question. And I don't know that we 100% know what will be different in this system. What I can say is several things. This last session really did support, I think, the work that it's about to embark. One, the state of North Carolina, after probably 12 to 15 years, raised Medicaid rates, which will help some of our providers, especially our residential providers, be able to maintain staff. There was also an infusion of funding into the child and welfare system, which I think will be a big help to help our provider network. We'll be looking at a statewide provider network. And then the third thing that happened is a commission that will be formed, a study group, to look at what are the systemic issues that plague this system to better improve it. For the last two years or more, Vaya has been working with our other sister organizations, with our DSSs, to look at how we could create a better system across the state of North Carolina. We have statewide contracts, statewide referral processes. We have really reduced the barriers across the whole system to be able for our DSSs to better access care. And I know you're tired and you've got a lot more things, so I'll just say a few more things. Some of the requirements of this particular application, Vaya has been doing for a very, very long time, embedded care management. That is a process where our staff, our clinical staff, and our support staff go in and work at the DSS office with their social workers, providing case support, helping find placements, doing consultation for children and adults. And really, they're just available to be a partner and a family member with the DSS staff. Some of the other things Vaya has been doing is really working on processes to improve foster care recruitment, both foster care and therapeutic foster care recruitment. We just finished a large campaign. We've been working on training programs for our DSS and child welfare staff, and just a number of things that we feel like we should do as a sister agency to partner with our DSSs. I know there are a lot of systemic challenges in the child welfare system, but I can tell you that we've had a long and strong commitment to your agency, as well as all the other agencies that we serve. So I'll let Patrick, and I would like to just say the last thing. Patrick, I have to recognize him, as well as Chairman Shields. They're members of our regional board. We have a regional advisory board that works with us. And Patrick, as well as two other of your Macon County residents are also members of our Vaya Health board. So we really appreciate that public input and participation from our counties.
Thank you, Shelley. Gentlemen, I think the only thing that I would wanna add to this, you've heard me many times come up here and talk with you about the importance of partnering with Vaya. I think the only thing that I would just add to what Shelley has mentioned is, one thing that I've mentioned to this board before is that this is a local organization that will support local children. Vaya was started off in Jackson County, right across the way, and they immediately began supporting all of the far western counties over 50 years ago. If this plan goes to a private provider, I would hate to think that I might have to call Burlington, Vermont, to try and get some assistance for a child here in Macon County. I'd much rather think that I gotta call somebody with an 828 area code on their phone number to be able to get the assistance. Or better yet, walk down the hallway in my own building to be able to go see that embedded care manager and talk with them about the importance of why this child needs placement. Your consideration of supporting this resolution to support Vaya's application, I really appreciate it.
I see, Shelley, you have to go back over what, two mountains? To go on?
Oh, yeah.
Shall we involve some?
Yeah.
You'll hear your one stop when you get back home.
I know, wait maybe a couple more days.
You just gotta cheer them up.
And so, we included in your packet a letter of support template for you to consider for submission of our application. You can either, I don't know if you had any questions about it, because that's, I guess that's what the RIR board denied is to ask if you would be able to support us.
I've heard this thing a couple times. Can you give me just layman's terms of this? I mean, I feel like, in here talks about it being, being a more difficult community of foster care. There's already challenges here enough. How is this gonna make it better for our local community? Can you just give me the breakdown of exactly what this is gonna be, layman's terms?
Well, first of all, you're asking me to have a crystal ball of how this is gonna make it better. The state decided to adopt this particular plan. We had originally wanted to maintain a regional plan, but that's no longer a possibility. We have grown from a seven-county agency to now 33 counties. And in partnership with this other agency that is like us, we will have 47 counties. What I think will hopefully make it better is, one, the state is now putting a lot of attention, I think, on the child welfare system. And for the first time in I don't know how long, rates have increased, there's additional funding, there's a study group. So I feel like there's gonna be some momentum. How is Vaya going to do a better job? I can just say, we have experience in doing this. Many of the requirements that are outlined in the plan, we have been doing for a very, very long time. We have continued to grow and evolve. We do have those state contracts. I mean, this is, this is gonna happen. The only thing that will be decided on is who will be managing the care for Patrick's children in his office.
And if we don't take action, does the care stay local or does one of those patient line?
There's a potential that it could go to a private plan, a full-profit private provider.
I mean, I hate to say this, but I feel like that's probably better than the government. And the government's not, they have a pretty good model on it right now, so for a nice single line, profit, seems better.
The only thing I would, the only thing I would offer to put it in a little bit more layman's terms, if you will, is Vaya's an organization that's been working with troubled families, youth, for 50 years. They know mental health services inside and out. A private provider who might be used to providing health care and working with health providers certainly is gonna be able to provide good overall health care. I think they're gonna be challenged to be able to step up and understand how to provide mental health and behavioral health, substance use services to children and families when they've never been in that arena before.
And just to echo that, they currently don't provide those acute level of services that Vaya does. That's our responsibility. The other private companies, they manage like outpatient visit, that type of thing, and some emergency services we all cover. But it's what we've been doing our whole life and it's the kind of families that unfortunately, Patrick, is dealing with day in and day out, where there can be very complex mental health and substance use issues. And I would say, we're as cost-effective as any of the plans. And I will say, as a public agency, the funds that do come back to Vaya, we put back in the community. So we're very proud of that.
So, I guess not going to private is, if I'm understanding this correctly, that helps you keep everything a lot more local, right?
Certainly, I mean, certainly Vaya will end up working in a statewide capacity, but their roots are here in western North Carolina. And I think that has a lot of... and I think that has a lot of, I think that means that our youth are gonna be able to continue to receive the services that they have been receiving as opposed to a statewide plan that might be operated, again, out of state, where I'm not sure they, I'm pretty sure they'd be challenged to find Frank to come on and map anything else.
And we do have a commitment to maintaining that local presence and better care management, all the things that we're doing now, our boards, our regional board, we will continue to do, and have staff that are local to this area.
Patrick, go ahead. Is that you three there? Just out of great curiosity, and I'm really confused, or not really confused, it's concerning that our youth and the mental problems that they have, it seems like it's growing instead of shrinking. If Vaya has been involved in this for fifty years, what is causing, I mean, what's happening in our society that is causing our youth to be, and the reason why? My daughter-in-law is a social worker. She deals with the troubled youth. My youngest son is just now finishing up, and that's why he is studying, has been studying, is social work. But what's happening? What, I mean, if it's fifty years and it seems to be growing and rising?
Well, a couple of things for that, John. I'll offer, first of all, I have job openings available if they're looking. That's just one thing. The second thing is, I think, when you look at, first of all, I guess I gotta ask how much time you have, because when you start looking at the complexity of the breakdown of family systems, when you start talking about the increased potency of addiction and the meth, the substances that are being used, and how addictive they are compared to substances that might have been used in the past. When you start talking about the loss of services for at-risk youth and families, I think you start to see some systemic issues that really do compound. And while Vaya has been doing this for fifty years, I don't think that it would be fair for us to say, we're gonna load everything onto their shoulders as they're gonna fix all the problems when they're facing these mountains of other issues that continue to be systemic and build upon one another. They really create much more trouble. And you're a hundred percent correct. We're seeing youth with higher acuity levels at much, much younger ages than when I was a social worker. When I was a social worker, it might have been, we had to deal with dirty houses and maybe a little bit of substance use. Today, I would argue that there is not a single case that we have on our caseload that doesn't include somehow significant substance use, significant family dysfunction, significant family violence. These things compound one on another. They're generational. It's incredibly hard to break that cycle.
Would you say like you've seen the breakdown of this really starting with the breakdown of the nuclear family?
I certainly wouldn't argue that. That certainly has been a contributor, for sure. We've seen, I'm sorry.
I say that because if the problem started to get old, a lot of times we're putting that, the burden on institutions to fix something that didn't start with the institutions.
I would certainly say that's a contributing issue. We deal with individuals who are single parents, day in and day out. As concerning, maybe more concerning, is the fact that we deal with single parents who come to this area who have zero support. There's no family member to support them. They don't have a job. They don't have adequate transportation. We worked with a family the other day, and we were talking with that family member to say, look, we've gotta figure out a plan. We need someone to be here tonight to help you, help keep your family safe. Who can we call that can be here as quickly as possible? My nearest relative isn't able for it. We're seeing lots of individuals who don't have those family supports, those nuclear families to lean on to help get them through the stressful times. I would certainly say that's a contributing factor.
And I think that we, this board here, some of us talked to each other about the breakdown. We had the opportunity to have three institutions that were brought up. One was your home, one, one, another was your spiritual compass, and another was your education. I'd be lying to you, you've lost the home, and you lose your spiritual compass, which is value system. Only thing that less is education. And that's why you're hearing us talk about, we need to make sure that we zero in on education. You've got, in Macon County, forty-five-hundred-plus students that you can capture and kind of work with. You saw some of the things here tonight. That's a salvage program. You're trying to keep some young people involved, puts in arts or music or whatever they're doing. The three institutions are in trouble, and they, we're gonna have to rely a lot on the education because the other two are really struggling. And I can see, I was in MBD today, and it was a whole, you there with me? It's a whole, we're in trouble, is all I'm saying. And we gotta find a way, solutions. We can say it's a problem, but you gotta work hard. This room does, make sure we look for solutions to help these young people.
If there's an organization that understands exactly those dynamics and exactly those kinds of institutions, I believe it's Vaya, who, again, knows the families, knows the children that we work with, has a worker who comes to my office every day to help us problem solve, to figure out, how do we, how do we help these families? How do we help these children?
And just have, this, I've been with you maybe a year, and what I found out is that there's a lot of people in leadership positions that's on your boards. And we do a lot of meetings and stuff like that, and you do excellent work. I guess, maybe, when I first read this, I was a little hesitant that you were expanding, you know, but I know the need is there. Being selfish, I like that little seven-county region, so we can just talk to you. And last year, we even gone thirty-three, and now you're forty-seven. Don't get so big that you can't be a part of the reason that you're representing. Sometimes we get big, we lose, we lose county. When you're with seven regions, we're in seven counties, we have a touch to you all the time.
Well, I can just say, I've been around for twenty-five years, and I stay in the seven counties, and our staff stay in it, and I'm deeply committed to this region. And that's something that is going to, that's what's coming.
And the state has realized how valuable Vaya is, or they wouldn't be knocking on your door when they have other opportunities knocking on other people's doors. You proved your worth.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the long-term support that you all have given us. And I just have to say, I appreciate your DSS director, who deals in this issue every day, coming out and being such a strong supporter for us.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would, I would offer for your concern about growing is, as Shelley mentioned, I have an opportunity to serve on the governing board of Vaya, and that occurred after they expanded to the thirty-three counties. I serve in a non-voting and advisory capacity. But Vaya felt it was important enough at the time to have that DSS subject matter expert. By no means am I calling myself an expert, please don't misunderstand. But at least I have a little bit of working knowledge that I can offer to the board on a regular basis whenever they meet. They felt that it was important enough to have that voice in the room. They invited me to remain on their board. And I believe when they go statewide, I believe Vaya would be an organization that will somehow have an opportunity to hear from all the various regions it serves, which means that there won't be any corner of the state that's left out of the board.
I think the really way that I had in one of our meetings prior was the, it's huge to break down the families of, is the black foster care. And they're in a bed, in a hall, and stuff like that. And obviously, that's hard for me to comprehend, but it's there.
I will say, Vaya just ended, although we can keep using it. We funded for our whole catchment area. It's a program called Adventure Awaits. It was a recruitment campaign in partnership with our DSSs and our therapeutic foster care providers to recruit new foster care families. So hopefully, we'll have some good new families coming your way.
When you have those foster families who are committed to the children and families from their county, oftentimes those foster families will stick in there. They'll hang with those children and families despite some other disruptions. That's been one thing that's kept us from having the experience of those children sleeping on the floors like other counties around us.
Let me say one last thing though. When you talked about foster care the last time, I was really shocked that a person, a foster child, could be in a car going to a foster home, and before you get there, somebody called that home and said, somebody, I'm taking this child, another child, we gotta let it pay more? Did I hear that wrong?
Oh, so I think, I think what you're recalling is, there have been instances when we've been working with private child placement agencies who are, you know, who are a group, more a congregant or group setting. And we've had the experience of having a child admitted to that facility. Maybe that facility is located in, say, Charlotte. And while we're transporting that child to that facility, have gotten a call from that provider to say, sorry, we've got another child who fits better within the group of children that we already have, and by the way, that LMEO might be paying a little bit more, so we're gonna give that slot to that child. It's the, it's the support of the foster families that Vaya has recognized and is helping to recruit that has kept us from being in broken times.
Thank you for that.
Sure. So do you have competitors in this, in this market, Vaya?
Do we have competitors?
Yes.
We, we are divided right now by region. So our organization manages the more moderate to severe mental health, substance use, and developmental disability services. And in July, we're also taking on the healthcare and pharmacy care for that population. There are other plans, health plans, that manage what is called a standard plan, which is more mild to moderate, mental health and substance use issues, and mostly physical health issues. But we're the only agency right now that manages the care for those who are moderate to severe in the thirty-three counties. And we would just like to continue, we will continue doing that. Even if we don't get this approved, this application approved by the state, if they don't select us, we'll still be managing care for people that are not part of the child welfare system who are locked out of Medicaid.
So while we only know that Vaya is making an application in response to this RFA, we can reasonably anticipate that all of the private plan providers, the medical providers, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United, Centene, those folks will likely make an application to this RFA as well. We don't know that, but it's a reasonable assumption.
Tonight, are you looking for a motion to support this?
I think yes.
Have you submitted this to the other counties in the catchment area? How many of those have signed on it?
I've been to, in my area, well, I only know my seven counties. I would have to check. I've been to Cherokee, Swain, and Clay. And Cherokee and Clay, I've already gotten letters. Swain is putting in, I had to go to their work session, and they couldn't vote. So they are recruiting it on their consent agenda at their next meeting. So, and Jackson, today I was there, and they had a work session, so I should know next week. But I anticipate, in the past, all of the other counties have always supported us.
This will be presented to the Social Services Board next week when we meet, and I'll ask the board at that time for their permission to go ahead and provide a letter on behalf of their board.
Patrick, one more question on that. Is this all driven by Medicaid expansion?
I'm sorry?
Is all this driven by Medicaid expansion, people, companies, and?
I don't think anyone was interested in child welfare until Medicaid expansion. I'm not sure. But I think it was more, hopefully, the state has been trying to do this for several years.
Yeah, I do think that, I do think there's been a renewed interest in this as an issue, and so we're certainly seeing more and more of the typical healthcare providers or the healthcare plans express an interest in serving this population. Certainly, expansion has, I assume, helped open that door to some degree.
And one more. I think to Commissioner Bigg, I'm not sure if that's what he was asking. If it's not Vaya, who is it?
And that's, while we don't know, that would be my guess, would be the private healthcare plan would be the ones bidding.
They have to be managing Medicaid in the state now, so it would be, that would be your choices, I think.
So proud of your vibe with that. I mean, that's what it looks like.
This time, I like you guys. I like you all, I like the, I guess, the grassroots movement of this organization, how it started here. And just you guys, this is kind of your plan, so in my mind, so I didn't say. This time, I'd like to make a motion to support Vaya to become statewide administrator of CFSB, collaboration partners of mine.
Good work. Motion second, and four discussions. Now, I'll vote, I'll be ready, right hand.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I really enjoyed, I enjoyed the whole meeting tonight, the late school kids. That was great.
I can still sing if there was time. No.
Oh, business, yes. We got Jack Morgan here with us tonight. Somebody open that door back there, if you don't mind, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Here for item number ten A, consideration and approval of proposal for assessing the clock tower.
Gentlemen, is he not here? I've had a little bit of ear effects, so I'm not hearing him out of his mouth either. So if I act like I didn't hear you, I didn't, okay? Anyway, last month, the garden club came to me, and they made a pretty good argument about the clock tower needing to be taken. And after that meeting, I asked Mr. Nolan if it'd be okay, I mean, an architect looked at it, and said if there was some real problems or just maybe some things in there. When we looked at it, and it's in pretty good shape structurally. The brick base is good, the mortar's soft, the bricks are soft because they're old, but the structure is sound. The tower itself, as opposed to lean type construction, which is plenty heavy enough, it's not suffered any weather damage yet, but it's, it will. The cladding on the outside is what seems to be the worst. Need a lot of damaged wood removed, just not structural, just removed and replaced. Some of the roof sheet underneath, when you go up in there, is stained, water. We don't know how that is damaged yet. And you probably walk until you remove that roof. And also, when you remove that roof, there's a plastic sky right on top. That's about, since when was it eighty-four, eighty-three that thing was built? So I don't know if that plastic will be able to withstand much movement when we take the roof off. So anyway.
Jack?
Yes?
I'd like to ask Steve Wilson to come up. We're in order together, and he's been in the clock tower, emailed this to me, so I want to hear what you gotta say. Love you, Steve.
Well, I just had.
I want to back to you, I want you to hear.
Okay.
I want you to hear.
I'll shut up.
Go ahead, Jack. I want you to hear what you gotta say.
The architect suggested that we do an in-depth study. We need to do that, and to suggest what repairs we need to make. He's asking for a contract cost of twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty bucks. Steve?
Twenty-six hundred for design fees. Charlie?
Twenty-six fifty for design fees.
Twenty-six fifteen for his fees.
And what company was that, I was down?
That's Peter Logan with Architect. That's Peter Logan with Architect Design and Painting. Mr. Shields and Mr. Rowland happened to climb that day we were looking, so I believe it.
Mr. Morgan, that clock tower, through all the inspection and everything else, that... All the repairs and stuff are cosmetic stuff. I mean, roof, obviously, is bad, there's some wood falling off of it, and all that stuff. I just don't understand why we need, what the importance of having an architect engineer telling us what we already know. We know the clock tower needs some immediate attention. It needs new wood, it needs a new roof, it needs new paint. Once you take the shingles off of that roof, then you'll see the decking. The decking is more than likely gonna have, some of it's gonna have to be replaced. And I just don't, I just don't get why we don't have builders in this community that will not step up to the plate to volunteer and use organizations instead of going through the tax base. It, it, it just, I mean, we should be able to look at that clock tower, even if we put it out for bids to a building contractor. They should be able to look at that and say, "It's gonna be three square for shingles. You know, it's gonna cost X amount for paint. This wood needs to be replaced." What, what do we need an architect or an engineer to tell us?
Mostly for the construction administration. That's a very sensitive area there. The garden club has done a lot of work around this one thing. Plus, it's subject to pedestrian traffic. We want somebody that has some real good insurance up there working, if you don't mind. And we'd like to bid that. If somebody contracts, who wants to bid zero, or five, that is a fantastic job. But I'm a little concerned about this term, this public, to take care of it without proper insurance, without proper safety equipment, stuff like that.
Right, but we can't barricade that off and stop pedestrian traffic from coming in like all the other... What do they do when they pour the sidewalks? They barricaded off where pedestrians can't get to it. But I just think all this stuff is, is visible by the naked eye. And adding twenty-six hundred dollars to this cost, it's just gonna add to the cost of this repairs that we're being... And, and you did a great job with getting contractors gathered up for the Nano-Hable Library and all that other stuff. I mean, that's, I mean, I just still think that even at that, we can go through town business-wise and get these businesses on Main Street to take care of Main Street. They're the ones that are here that, that does business with them. And I'd almost guarantee some people would be willing to, to step up to the plate. And I swear, we need to, I mean, this hitting the taxpayers for everything to take care of that old county is just... It, it blows my mind that, that we don't seek out. I've mentioned it before. The carpentry class, the Franklin High School, the other organizations, the, what is the group out there on the Pilates Road? What's the group of?
Men's Challenge.
Men's Challenge and people like that.
I feel like, so I did talk to, I, I did speak in carpentry this year. I think John Gorgon got a good pass. I think the problem is, not taking sides here at all, but high school kids twenty-five feet off the ground. Remember what I was in high school. So I think you're on the right track. I just don't know if this project is suitable for, like, I think that the Men's Challenge is a wonderful organization that needs projects, but I don't know if this is... Right, let's, let's find some projects for them, but I don't, I like where you're going, I just don't know how to go there. Somebody said grab the bull by the horn.
Yeah.
And Steve, I thought, well, it said your emails are, they're fine. I didn't mean to say they were offenses, they were fine. Steve and I know each other well enough, we can talk each other out of it. The, from my standpoint, from our meeting the last time, and, and from information over the past year between you and Mr. Bigg and what, what y'all were involved in, cleaning the statues and things like that. As the chairman of the board, I felt pressured to get something done to this clock. I commended to the garden club, Steve, a lot of people had asked to be a part of it. But from my standpoint, I felt like the need was out there. That we need to go ahead and address this piece here and get this thing off of our list. And, and I think, and talking to Mr. Rowland and his people, they felt the same urgency as I did. And didn't at least, I hope I conveyed that to them, that we need to go ahead and get this clock tower squared away. And there will be other projects, Don, I think, that's gonna pop up that, that we're making, it's in hell. I know, from a school standpoint, there's a liability piece that the school may be uncomfortable with when they start working on a project. You're talking about the house and ground, those type of things. But I felt pressured as chairman to get something done. Because you and Paul have been part of this conversation over maybe a year. But we needed, and that's why Steve and I are running together. And he popped up one day and he was working on this project. And that was, that was good, but I felt when Mr. Rowland went to Jack and said, "Hey, look, we need to put some final touches on this thing, we need to get this moving." And a lot of pressure was going toward him and the, and I'm sure the other members here, of getting the clock tower taken care of. Jack, if I interrupt you, Jack, if you can send us?
No, no.
I'm just gonna say that that is the center of town. Needs to look like it, long as it's the center of town. Well, you know, we, this whole square here, the courthouse square, we started talking about this in February of last year.
Two years.
Two, two years? Well, two years, but we're still in the same position we were. And we're talking about a minimal expenditure to fix that clock tower. And why we are just talking about this to death when we've got fifty-two million dollars sitting in the bank is, is just, it, it's...
But I think, excuse me, I, I think, I've been the, one of the foot dragger on this. But I think you and Paul, Morgan, I've heard y'all talk about it over a year or two. But when the garden club had an opportunity to meet with them while they were working down there, and they brought some items that they wanted those to address. I think, I'm not saying that the urgency that I felt proceeding to this more pertaining to the clock tower, no, there it is. I talked to Mr. Rowland, said, "Can we move this a little quicker? Can we get something done to not do what you're talking about? Just keep talking about it." And I think that's, Jack, that's what we're in the process now of doing something.
This is exploration and suggestion. And I need you gentlemen to tell me if you want me to proceed with this.
Well, and I think there are a few things we gotta keep in mind. I think, and I, you know, we've all slept since then, but I do believe at last meeting, when this was discussed, safety issues were a real concern. That was a concern that was being talked about by the garden club. That was a concern that I think was voiced among us when we were talking about it. So we, we did, you know, being that it's a heavily trafficked area right in the middle of town, that is the centerpiece of town, you know, that is something that we take seriously, especially when we're hearing, hey, you know, that this could fall and somebody could get hurt, you know? So we wanna take that seriously. And when, when we're designing this, I think there's a few things we gotta keep in mind about the need for an architect. First of all, this proposal is for discovery and documentation. And you can see here that he has came and gave it a first blush. He climbed up on a ladder while he was here, looked around in it, said there does not, said here, he climbed two ladders to the top of the clock tower, rode the lift. I do not believe the present condition of the clock tower envelope possesses public safety concerns at this time. He does wanna emphasize the urgency due to the water penetration and, and provide a more in-depth look on what is going on. And I think, you know, we gotta keep in mind, with this being a heavily trafficked area in the center of town, when these repairs are made, what repairs are needed, we need to be sure from a liability standpoint that we've covered all our bases. Because if one day something does happen, God forbid, you know, that architect's there to certify that work, to oversee the construction process, like Jack said, through a, through a congested area that's in the center of town, that at the end of the project does need to look like something. And we do need to have a recourse if that clock tower at the end of the project does not look like that we thought it should look like. And so the architect and utilizing the architect, especially in the public, set your project like this, it gives us that. It gives us, number one, the surety that, that we're taking all steps needed to make sure that we're doing everything to keep this thing safe. Number two, it gives us, it puts liability on the architect. Because now we've got a design professional certifying that this thing's structural and that these repairs will uphold the structural integrity of that. And three, the architect is administering the, this project in a heavily and highly trafficked area. So I think those are all things we gotta keep in mind when we're considering this proposal. Josh mentioned, Commissioner Young mentioned a second ago, this fee does not include the drawings and specifications. This twenty-six hundred dollars. This includes phase one, which is additional discovery and documentation of those findings. Like we said, that, the first, he didn't charge us anything to come out here the first time. He just climbed up the ladder, looked around, rode up on the lift, looked around the top of it, and, and, and gave it a first blush. This is to come back and do further documentation and then additional fee. This is phase one. So an additional fee will be provided for the design and then an additional fee to be determined for what's required of construction. But it's kind of one of those things, he couldn't give us an all-inclusive price because until you start peeling back the onion, you don't know what's gonna be in there. So that's kind of where we're at with this, with this architect proposal right now. Jack, did I mention to miss anything?
You're good. The, let me say one other thing. Steve Briss were here, we met a year or so ago. I'd like for him to, now Steve may be in a, a lot like John Sherrill was looking like, talking about trying to do some things. You called me last night, I told you Jack Morgan was gonna present tonight, I just wanted you to hear what he was saying. Can we take just a few minutes on, have you been looking at this?
I did, I went down and just looked at it myself and overall, you know, I'm new to towns, I don't know it. I took the guy that built my home, which is Brett, over Caroline Billings. And so Brett, I went up there and looked at the piece, we met up in the tower. Didn't see a lot of, didn't see any water, saw water leaking when we went while we drained, we saw it. Didn't see any, a lot of structural damage up there, but a lot of the boards, facial boards, both roofs need to be replaced. But structurally, it looked pretty sound. You're, just like everything, once you peel that onion back and take the roof off, you'll start looking at the boards underneath, maybe some that have to come out. But I had Brett give me a price, and so he came in at eleven thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars to repair that. He is, he's gonna put a, you know, a slate composite, a dark gray roofing on the very top part. He's got that, he's gonna donate that. The bottom part, you want, you want to put metal flashing, metal roofing. I'm hoping Kyle Leffler, K and L Metals, is gonna, he's got extra that can take care of that. The garden club told me the job corps, as I already said, they would paint it. So Brett took the painting out of his purse. So he's gonna replace all the boards, put both roofs on there and all, and that, that came out to one thousand dollars. But he's got all the insurance that we need and, and so not, not too worried. You know, there's probably only a couple of days to the work. It's not a lot.
And Mr. Chairman, I just had a conversation with Commissioner Young. And I said, "This project is gonna be less than twenty thousand dollars total if a contractor comes in there." If we go into twenty-six hundred for an architect, and then an architect to the next phase, and then the next phase, we're gonna add as much to this project as it's gonna cost to fix it. And we have tons of building contractors in this community. That's the driving force behind our economy. Lean it to the professionals. I have insurance, and if I went up there and built that and, and barricaded that off, and, and I'm responsible for it. One hundred percent. I have liability insurance, I have work comp insurance. So we're protected, the county's protected. So to lean on an architect for something that is superficial like this clock tower is, we know exactly what's wrong with it. It, it, it blows my mind that we would consider hiring and paying additional funds to a firm that is not needed in my personal opinion and my business opinion. I inspected a clock tower pretty well, and that's why I said it's gonna cost less than twenty thousand dollars to, to fix this clock tower. And I would highly recommend it if sitting there, if it's been sitting there in that shape for a year, two years, boards are hanging off of it, we need to move on this board, as the board ASAP, and put this liability into someone else's hands while it's reconstructed and fixed.
I can do to say again, this is for discovery and documentation, so he gave a cursory look. But we don't know, I mean, we don't know for a fact that there isn't any issues. And this is a design professional that is, would be putting a seal on there are not no issues. And, and if he take, what if he takes a closer look and there are structural issues that, that have been overlooked before? Before any, again, and I'm not trying to add cost to the project. I'm not trying to, to put undue burden on the taxpayer. But again, this isn't a shed on, on, on somebody's property somewhere. This is a public clock tower that's in the center of town that, that again, that is, has significant implications and, and has, has been stated, and we've talked about with the garden club in open session, last meeting, the potential safety hazards and things. So I, I just, I'm just advising the board and the board can of course do whatever it chooses. And I'll support a hundred percent whatever this board chooses to do. But I'm just saying, no, it, it's important on something like this, I think, to measure twice and cut once, if you will.
But nobody's gonna know what damage is until you take that roof off. So I don't care if I'm architect who, nobody's gonna know it until you take everything off the roof, and then you're gonna say... He may come back and say, "Hey, I may have to put two four rail sheets up there and another couple hundred bucks." But I mean, you're not gonna know it until you take it off.
Man, I feel like we're... Look, I think everybody's trying to move in the right direction, but I think we're particularly divided here. We're talking about paint and one by. That's not a big deal, there's no reason to have an architect. But if there's potential, and I guess I'm gonna look at legal counsel out here, it's taxpayer dollars. If we were to, I mean, John, I'm willing to support whatever you wanna do, then you could find somebody to do it for free. I mean, how do we live there? But I feel like we're talking about for two years and popping out of the woods, so at this point in time, we'd default to hiring somebody. Eric, I mean, is this something that if we're gonna spend or invest taxpayer funds, do we need to stand on this? Like, is this something we need to do?
I think you can, yep, you have to do them.
Architect services?
No, the other, if we were just to hire...
I just thought, I mean, we hired a builder and put it up there and it falls off two years.
It's, it's in the formal range for construction. It's such a small project.
You can hire somebody to...
We would, we would solicit some bids, but not in the formal...
And then have them, have them contract to, to be liable for it. And they have a, give a general one-year warranty, have a workmanship, whatever that word is, later. Yes, they would, they would need to warranty the work. Or you could hire somebody to do that, and they would warranty the work for that.
So we just give them a list of what we thought needed to be done to the clock tower?
Yes, so, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I appreciate what everybody's saying. I always appreciate the gentleman statement, we all, you know, I've been messing with this thing for two years. I've been with talent officials and area, they all, county officials, walk Main Street, half a dozen times. It's not just the clock tower. We're talking about the center of Nathan County. It looks like the people died down there. The sidewalks are cracked, the trees are overgrown, the planters are terrible, the mulch has gone around. The courthouse looks, looks defeated. And I've sat down there and watched people come into town. I mean, you tell them we're tourists, and they just walk around. I think, man... was tourists and they just walk around and I think, man, the old gazebo, gazebo, that's a, yeah, remember, that was a water fountain filled with concrete, we turned it into a dance hall. I mean, it's just, it is not re, we're all talking about representing Macon County, that's not very representative of what I would like to see Macon County look like. And I think we're on the right track and we've talked this thing to death and nobody ever grabbed the ragged and run with it, we, we just, and Jack, I appreciate you taking the effort to get this thing started. I'm willing, uh, I want somebody in charge of this, but I will overall, or I would request, I don't dictate, but I would request a plan for the improvements of the town square. You know, if it wasn't for the garden club, we'd have to hire goats to clean that place up down there. I mean, thank God for what they did and we, we don't even, it just, it's frustrating to me, but could we expand the architectural services to get us some designs? I met with a local architect, I mean, a local landscape architect and he was going to submit, free him, going to submit us some plans for the planters and stuff like that and maybe some removal of the electric, never got any of that. People are thinking we'll do it for nothing anymore and I appreciate what John said. John, I would, John cleaned the clock tower. I mean, we'd still be looking at a dirty clock tower. We talk things to death, but we don't get anything done. And, uh, I'd just like to see before I leave here, a plan for down, the improvements of the downtown area and I think the taxpayers would support us doing it, so if you can expand on that.
Let's start with the clock tower.
Start with the clock, or phase one, phase two, blah, blah. That's where I'm at, I'm not opposed, we're, it's proven to me in two years, nobody's going to do nothing, going to do anything for now. And, uh.
Well, I did have a contractor come up and meet me originally and was willing to do that and he never got the approval. He wanted it to put his name on it for his kids, for the future, and every time they went by that clock tower, look what my daddy did.
That's a good idea.
And he was a licensed builder and everything else, he just picked, I put it out on Facebook and the contractor within thirty minutes responded and I said, all I said on Facebook was, I have a project in the center of downtown Franklin. If you're interested in volunteering to help repair this, contact me. And the builder did, he said, what do you have? I said, I'll meet you up there on Saturday morning. We went up and looked at it and I said, do me a favor, leave my name off of it and go see the town manager and get their blessings and then see the county manager. I don't know if he ever moved forward, I haven't heard any more out of it. All I know is the clock tower's in bad shape, it needs to be fixed and I'm prepared tonight to make a motion that this board task Mr. Morgan with supplying the list of the repairs that has been presented and put it out for bids to a licensed building contractor with the scope of what is known. Nobody will ever know what the unknowns are until the builder said, when you tear the roof off, you'll know if there's any structural damage. And we have structural engineers in Macon County and at that time, we can hire a structural engineer to tell us what we need to do, is that not correct? So at this time, I would make a motion that we, uh, put this out for bids, uh, to get this clock tower finished.
Since I've been involved, I've kind of felt like I've been one, one of the ones who's pushed this thing forward, he gets something done. I feel, I feel the same as Mr. Higgin there, is that we talked, we talked today, when I saw you down there, Jack, you and I were working and you were hanging someplace, you know, we had often talked to Steve, he was talking the same thing, I wanted him coming out here, what, what we're going here, don't want him to waste his time, but I appreciate what you've done, Steve, I just wanted to hear, so you don't know what we're going on. I have to work. We got, I made a motion and so, I'll be right to second it, I think I can do that. I'll say the motion.
Now, uh, John, I like where you're going here, a couple of things, gentlemen. Mr. Higgin, were you insinuating earlier about hiring a conceptual architect on that whole project and just kind of get your.
Well, you're going to have somebody in charge.
I want to support this thing and move on down the road, I just want to make sure what we're doing is in the right direction, or you guys have had this bull for a couple of years.
I request that being, we'll address, we'll wait, have a motion.
Well, I'm, I'm just worried about, we, if we task Jack to tear the roof off and then we go hire an engineer after we figure out, like, engineers aren't going to jump on that, we can just open up a can of worms. So, John, I support this, I'm ready to move on, but I just want to make sure that, I have to take, you know, care of our taxpayer dollars and if we hire somebody and get in there, then what, you know, and I think, so, I just want to make sure this is what Mr. Higgin wants and what Mr. Sherr wants to know.
Well, the biggest thing is, is you don't know until that roof is taken off, whether or not there's any structural damage with the roof there. And so, until that happens, you don't know. So you can guess at it all day and, uh, and you're, I mean, a structural engineer is not very expensive. You need to, I mean, what the motion is now is to put it out for bid, get a licensed contractor to come in and here's the scope of work. And at that time, we have contingencies on every project that we do. What do we need if we have to get an engineer?
And so the county will administer the bids and everything?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's.
Is that David, one guy who's already headed up?
Jack's recommending the discovery by the design professional, um, and it's my understanding, and it's still my understanding, that during this discovery, he would, is going to identify if there's any major structural issues present at this tower through, I mean, I don't think he would give us a twenty-six hundred dollar proposal just to say, I'm not going to be able to tell you till we take the roof off.
And, and this could be the only phase we need him for.
That's right. And a bit of this way, not getting into something and then having to backtrack.
That's one fifth of the cost that we're talking about.
We don't know what the cost is.
Well, he just told us what it's going, what it's going to be.
We know the twenty-six hundred and fifteen.
No, he just, the licensed building contractor just told us that they worked up the proposal at eleven thousand dollars. That's one fifth of the proposal of, of getting an architect to tell us what we.
If that's all that's needed.
If that's all that's needed. Right now, we're looking, we always have, just like the sewer line at the Macon Middle School, nobody knew that sewer line was there, well, guess what? They broke ground, they found the sewer line, they come back, we had a tending order. That happens in every project that I've seen since I've served on this board. So, uh, that's not out of the ordinary.
But when you look up under the roof, there's no, there's no water spots. So that, right there tells me it's probably a pair of shit, because there's no water damage on the inside of the roof, but I can see.
There's some stain in it.
A little, no, it's not bad.
I don't know if it's damaged or not, it's just a stain.
And most of the private sector people's names on it, whoever does that lot, they're not going to want the center of town to come through and everybody laughing at the jobs they did. They're amazed on the on it, they're going to be proud of it.
I will say, make sure you share a sincere thank you, gentlemen, that give us that price.
Yeah, it's Brett Covert, you know, his wife and kids all work over there, so I'm just for him.
Seems good to us and I like his capacity to work right there, so I, I'm going to say.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
And I hope he, and I hope.
That's the only reason I deal with.
I hope he follows through and look at all the work out for him. I just want to say he's not.
Aren't there been a motion in the section?
Okay. Go back to the other motion.
It was a long motion.
Sure.
Tammy, please present my motion to, uh.
What I have is that your motion was to task Mr. Morgan to prepare a list of what is needed and to fit it out for me.
And, yes.
We're discussing now, Jack, and I tasked you, aside from the clock tower, to get, get a plan for the property that the county is responsible for in the center of Macon County, to get us a plan to make improvements. And sidewalks are cracked, there's liability issues coming up, I hear the bricks have fallen off the courthouse, I've not seen one, but, uh, just to get us a plan.
I think there's a few things we've got to remember, that the sidewalks and the sidewalks are the responsibility of the town and the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The gazebo property with the, that the ticket on the square is on, is, we have a forty-year lease on that with the town that, uh, contemplates the town kind of, uh, you know, coming to us with these things. And these are the things that, when Amy and I talked about this previously, um, that we can definitely, but I think it's going to be more than one person, I think when you start talking about that, number one, like the downtown, um, I know the town Franklin, uh, has some things for the downtown merchants, they used to, maybe a program with all the contacts and everything, but, but those sidewalks and then everything like that, that's the town or the DOT, that the gazebo is leased by the town for forty years, so much of, much of what we have, authority in that is, is limited there. And, and I think, you know, when you look at like the direct part, to have a conceptual plan, I think that's kind of, um, I think there's consulting firms out there, I think that's a lot to put on Jack because I don't think, you know, Jack is the most knowledgeable person that I know, um, when it comes to building, when it comes to, um, building code and everything like that, for, for design and, and redesign of, of downtown and public spaces and things like that. I think that's essentially the professionalism of a, of a firm.
Jack, can I?
And then I don't know, you know, who all do we want to involve in this? The, the, the town, you know, because it's their properties, uh, or not their, it's our property, that we have it leased with them, so what role do they have in it and, and things like that? I just think that is a, a, a very broad, a very broad topic that, that we need to really narrow down before we start, uh, talking about who does what on that.
It's a shame though, that our planters around the courthouse, the shrubs are dead around the courthouse, the mulch, the tree roots are exposed and all the planters downtown, I don't, get rid of give of them. I can't use that word. I don't care whose, we're responsible for it, it's representative of us and you, they are neglected. The DOT's not going to fix up sidewalks, or the planters, they may fix the sidewalks, but.
The garden club worked on those planters, I believe.
I don't, I just, I'm not.
Well, the root structures of those trees have the sidewalks risen about this high. That is a direct liability, I don't care who it is. It looks terrible. We talked before, those trees have lived their life. When you have streetscapes, they are limited on time. It is time to remove those and put new stuff in. Now we're dealing with a landscape architecture, uh, company. Who designed the, where the monument was just installed? I know Clarkham did the work, it's absolutely gorgeous.
Whoever did the women's history pill, I'll need to.
That's what I'm talking about, that's who, that's what I'm talking about.
I didn't talk about that for six months, neither did Lee.
So, so through this process, we met, Commissioner Higgin and I met with the town. We met with the mayor. We met with several people out here, some of the town councilmen. We were all on board, let's get this thing together and let's fix downtown Franklin. It died. Why? It is absolutely insane. And, I mean, we don't, I mean, this is minor detail, this is things to be proud of. And by all means, I'm a landscaping contractor, I understand the profession very well. I'll be glad to serve on a committee with other people to try to get downtown Franklin, the center of Macon County government, looking better. I mean, there's no reason we have to take pride in our town and it's like polling people. And, and I don't get, I mean, you're, you're, I don't think that the landscape part of it is something that you should be responsible for, but somebody has to take responsibility of moving this stuff forward.
I believe the clock tower is retired.
Let's go on, we're on to the gazebo, right?
We're good guys.
Just scratch my, I've given, I've, I would, I concede that we'll never get anything done downtown, let's do the gazebo while we can.
Gazebo or tower?
We're on the tower.
Gazebo, the clock tower, clock tower before it rocks down.
That's my motion and you second it.
All agree with stay focused with Jack Morgan on the clock tower.
Just kidding, okay.
Yeah, just.
What was that?
It would be an answer.
Didn't you, did you then have a separate issue?
No, I, I concede.
No, don't concede, let's get this, let's get this all on the road, Mr. Higgin.
I'm good, let's make that play.
We've had the motion, we've had the statement, we've had the discussion, we had the vote, five oh, Jack, keep on moving on, Steve.
I just turned my bid over to him, so he's got one bid already.
That's what Roderick does.
We're just connected, so that's all we are.
Hey, keep sending emails, let him say there were abuses.
I didn't hear you.
Thank you, thank you for, for giving our own letter, I apologize.
No problem.
Appreciate it. I need you to end these audits.
Oh, yes.
Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to talk about the library?
Yeah. Yeah, let's go with that.
Talk about the library, then we'll just talk about.
And if we've read our agenda, we should know what's happening with the clock.
Y'all should have a cog in the extension report, an engineer firm, fossil engineering, we hired you, NHL architects, see what's going on out of library. The beach, the photographs, we need to speak to themselves in that package. A port to share, it's chilling away from the main, I was pulling away from it. He sees that person, bitch, important to say, is supported by those post beams and the stickers and they embedded in these rock and concrete pillars. Leave the cage to the point that there are no longer structures to stand on the bottom. So it's not going to get better by any step either.
We got a lot of pick to examine that.
Yeah, we had more to look at, thank God the proposal is continuing. But it's going to take a lot of work, we're going to straighten it back up first, we're going to have to jack it up. They suggested is to cut the post off at the top of these concrete pillars and put a new concrete pillar and set the post on that. I think that will do it, myself, but it's, it's a major undertaking to do, it's, it's not a weekend job.
What are you going to do for finish on your concrete piers? You going to rot those or?
We'd probably rock them or something because, I mean, it looks pretty good as it is and we're going to have to destroy that to make it require us, so I would suggest putting some of that around and stuff, make it look like that. But also we have, you can see that the extent of the cave, all the posts and those photographs. Also, if you look at the roof, main part of the library, the dark at the top, there's also some details on the post beam. I was a little concerned about, one of the beams sagging, the engineer didn't seem to be concerned about that, so I don't worry about that one. But the ceiling itself, you see the black stain up there? It appears that there's condensation forming up there, we're not able to get out. So we're going to figure out how to get rid of that condensation up there and we're going to have to encapsulate or remove the part with the mold on it, man the mold testing is not the right, mold danger stuff that everybody's.
Jack, just talking about that faucet, what are the chances of that ridge cap, something water penetrating somehow that ridge cap? Because it's all the way across.
We took the ridge cap off, John, it doesn't appear to be tuned from there. It appears, it sits panels on the post beam destruction and there's a gap right at the top where it meets, which then ran over that, but we might be able to show what it is. Then the ridge caps are out on that and the ridge cap didn't breathe. So we think that condensation's. come inside, going up there. And actually, the water's been standing in it, ridge cap, and making back down again instead. So we've got to address that too. And then we're going to just attach it back to the main library again, sort of be structurally sound and look like it's supposed to. We've got a lot of money in that library. That's a very important feature out front. The option would be to tear that off. I would not suggest that.
It's not gonna be cheap to fix this. Pardon, it's not gonna be cheap to fix this.
It's not gonna be cheap to fix it. But the architects, architects are firm for that has given us not to exceed costs of twenty thousand dollars to finish the project up. That's his part, that's construction documents, construction drawings, and administration of the project. We'd have to put it out, we have a portion, I have no idea what cost coming.
In this statement here, I see AM Macon Early College, is that part of them?
Yeah, yeah. We're talking about that. Those photographs that Sarah placed out, I was asked to look at Macon Early College. You see that first photograph, there's like a buttress. There's eight of those. They actually don't have any purpose, other than just materials. You see that post on top of it, that looks like it's supporting the socket, but it's actually not. The socket we stayed there by itself. And that post is just aesthetics. The next photograph you look, the footer of that is very thin, not below the frost line, and sometimes it extends out over that. So exactly what it's doing is pulling away, as the next picture shows. And it's pulling away according to Jack's finger on the next bit, about two inches. About eight of those, I think, that we probably need to remove those. I'd like the architect to tell me that that'd be okay to remove those and just tuck it all down this corner. Also, you see a picture of the front of the cottage. There's four posts holding up that property. If you look at the next few pictures, they've been damaged by insects and decay. To what extent, I don't know until we tear those columns down to see. I just don't know what we're trying to do. I mean, by the same thing, we found the library, it's not pulled away yet. I certainly would like to ask you, if you let me have architect look at that and give a proposal to Macon Early College to keep the section from the library, because we need to do something with the library.
We need the same architect.
Yeah.
He's good, good average rates on that. I mean...
I tell you, the architects hard to find that do these jobs, smallest. We know we can find architects to do big jobs, but the little ones that just turn the most up there. This guy is responsive. We worked with him before. He knows what he's doing.
Most of these buildings have gotta be fixed.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to authorize you to talk channels to contract with an architect? Go to the next step. It's conceptual drawings or finishes evaluation, whatever. What is, let's just get it done. And that's my motion.
Okay. Well, we need approval, we need approval to spend that, not exceed twenty thousand dollars.
We'll need a budget amendment for twenty thousand. I would recommend taking it from general fund contingency. You've got a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars there.
That is not included in Macon Early College.
Yeah, that's just the library only. So let's act on that first. You've gotta get a proposal for the early college, is that correct?
Yes, I don't have one yet.
Yeah. So tonight is just a budget amendment for the library for twenty thousand dollars from general fund contingency. And of course, we'll, we'll contract with, was it Looper Architectural Design and Planning, if I was reading correctly? Is that correct, Jack?
Yeah.
With that, it's Looper Architectural Design and Planning.
I said it better myself.
And Mr. Morgan, that, you said the twenty thousand was, that's a complete fix?
That's the library, that's everything from him to fix that library. That's not the contract cost that's actually done.
Right, yes.
It's just everything else.
I second that motion.
That's not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Okay, we're gonna kind of improve the discussion.
Jack, I just wondered, I know it's, it's an outside approach, but what if they replaced that whole line? We're talking twenty thousand dollars to start with these. They just replace the whole thing? That's gonna be less simple?
Once you get above that decayed part where the concrete piers are, just get it. Motion's safe. We have the discussion, vote?
That, some of that sprinkler system is...
Oh, it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah. It seems to be compromised.
Yeah.
Yeah. It could be if you go to much weather, it'll pull that sprinkler system apart. We'd have a serious problem. We've gotta be really cautious when we jack it back up. Same reason.
And those light fixtures are in, involved in, in the sprinkler system, the way that whole thing is shifted out towards the parking lot is, so I mean, if it's sat there much longer, doing that's more...
They're gonna stop, everybody's stupid.
And Paul, also, if you wouldn't mind adding to your motion, just a resolution exempting architectural services for the Macon County Library from the provisions, Article three D of Chapter one forty-three of the North Carolina General Statutes.
We're recording this.
Uh-oh, she left?
She'll get it off of the, she'll get it off the video. So that's kind of just a two-part motion.
I agree with her.
Resolution.
That is my motion, and I second that.
Thank you.
Motion discussion, all of the agreement, question, go ahead.
unanimous?
Of our party, brother.
You'll come back to us on the early college. I will next month.
Mr. Morgan, on that early college with these, these little fake columns out here, it almost looks as if they are sliding off of that concrete pad. Is that, is that, the whole concrete and everything is shifting from, it's just sinking. Oh, it's sinking. Okay.
Have him look at grains off of the girds, too. Do you know that's that, that's bad?
Yeah.
Maybe it's probably...
Thank you, sir.
Are you ready, Jack? Morgan?
Thank you, Jack.
Let's see.
Presented before you is a slate of fees that we've been reviewing for environmental health. The Board of Health had passed us and the staff with the environmental health to look at these and make a recommendation for improvement. And at their meeting on March twenty-sixth, the Environmental Health approved the changes, pros of these changes to, to recommend to you.
The patient's hanging in there. I was supporting the other night, and I didn't follow any of these things, so I didn't agree with the media. But I want to clarify one thing. Somebody gave me a couple of questions, I read it. And the statement said that I recommended raising the environmental health fees, five hundred, seven hundred dollars. I've never made that statement. I've never been happy with increasing. I think these, these permit fees should be reduced for free. I mean, that's the only thing that really ties the economy in Macon County. I mean, it's, that's a vital problem over there. And as anybody, if y'all looked at the proposed fee structure?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it very much.
If we take that, let these guys, I want to talk to them individually, and you know me, I didn't agree with, I mean, I appreciate letting the thought of it down, but Jack, the three-bedroom, the three-bedroom is the most common, I think, application there is.
I think some of the considerations that the staff had was trying to present a more tiered system as far as the fee structure, when it came to increasing number of bedrooms, the application fee would just go up in a tiered fashion. And so the other changes, for example, the, the tattoo permit fee, they, the actual recommendation was to decrease that fee. The justification for the, the fee wasn't there based on the amount of work that we have to do to permit a tattoo artist.
There's some total permitting fees. All, all I'm interested in is environmental health, on the side way toward code. And Lisa, thank you. And I understand now that you are the more time environmental supervisor?
And I feel a lot of work into this. And, and when we look at the fees, we're also, we also pull fees from surrounding counties. So the board usually got, I got the seven western counties, and y'all, the Board of Health would provide with a set of those fees. And looking at comparison, you know, what their fees are to what we're charging. And we're right, pretty much in line. I mean, I can provide you with the same set of fees for the surrounding counties, but we're pretty much in line with, with the other counties and the rest.
Any, any fellow members of the board of staff, who's been with this for forty years now?
Yeah, I'd love to have more time to process this because, I mean, why are we, just because the other counties that surround us, that don't warrant us matching them, why are we requesting increases in fees and why are we requesting decreases in fees? Is it just because we can't? Is it just the policies surrounding counties are? Do we need the money? Is it going to improve the services? Are we going to get the, the delay in all of these inspections and everything? Is it going to improve that, to cut it down? Those are questions that I have based on that, that I would love to get into.
Like I said, that, one of the considerations of the staff was looking at going from more of a flat, basically to priced fee structure, to more of a tiered structure, where the fee actually increased as the number of bedrooms were applied. So where we had a five hundred dollar flat fee for a three bedroom, and then it jumped up to a thousand dollars. So we were looking at trying to tier that as a gradual increase with the number of bedrooms that were applied.
Well, it's hard to find logic, and these are just numbers we're pulling out of the air, year, four-year of supervising.
Well, they've been, you know, those fees for years. I mean, we haven't looked at these fees, and they haven't changed for years.
We just made up when there were, there's no logic. The only, the only county that has a logistical approach to fee structure is Jackson County. It's a hundred and twenty dollars per bedroom, a hundred and twenty dollars for an operation, I mean, for a construction operation. If you're gonna get a three-bedroom, you don't have to say that's at five hundred, is that's it? Three times one twenty, four-bedroom, five-bedroom, six-bedroom, times one twenty. Not, not a thousand or eleven hundred fifty. It's, that's, that's, it's, we're rolling mini a program. And Jackson County, and, and, and I hate to be harsh, can you hear me? Every time you and I talk, I'm harsh, the same thing, is, you know, to raise a fee for any service, and you're not improving the service, this doesn't die. Four to six weeks behind is what I'm hearing now. They stopped with the Jackson County, they got nine employees, they cross-trained, they're food lodging people with the families in the main, they're two days out, you know. If you come out and have to fix this week, you're gonna get, you're gonna get it.
Well, they have, they do have more employees than we have.
Well, should we advocate for more employees? What is the problem? Why can't we not fix that?
I mean, we, we actually get more applications than they do. I mean, not, the, the quantity of applications coming in have set, you know, been more than what they are in Jackson County. They have more staff than we do actually out of the field. So part of it is timing. We've got, you know, new employees that are just hired, and talked about how long it takes to train them. Their staff, fully trained, they're, they're out in the field. So, you know, it takes time to do that, and we are working on getting those trained. And we've definitely seen as one environmental health specialist comes on board and can actually start issuing permits themselves, we get more product, we can see that in the numbers. So we're, you know, it's a timing, trying to get the staff, fully staff, fully trained, and go.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Been involved in this for over thirty-five years. It's never been, we, Macon County has never gotten down.
We are, we are.
To this four or five weeks. It's just, I just can't get my mind around it. And it's so important, the day after the board health meeting, and I'll share you his name if you won't know it. Call me the next morning, said Paul, ads want to build another house by his, his tech house. And I just called him, and they said they were six to eight weeks behind. What do I do? I started giving your name, but I've done that so much, I've just quit doing that. There's no reason we can't fine tune this program to give a more prompt service. And that's all I got to say down.
Well, I can't level down right there. We all get big up in this. You're the person standing up here, other than you're the one who gets the blame, but Jack, how do we do it? I mean, that's a serious question. And we've talked about this last year, talked about the year before that. It's a real problem from that standpoint.
Especially staff, having the...
Do we need to give you money for staff? What, what do we need?
Yeah, put it in the budget.
We've done contractors, we've put in environmental health techs, we added two of those last year.
So basically added some, or found some over time, and they're working over time.
We've threw everything, that we give them everything they've asked for, and we will continue to...
I mean, how does, I can't see how Jackson County could do it weekend. I mean, I'm not being...
Oh, I understand.
Look, Jackson County?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm telling you. I'm here pledging, like, you need money. Put it in their hand. Like you said, it's, it's, it's definitely our little economy right here. What happens is, when somebody is ready to pull the trucker and build a home, and they have to wait six, eight weeks to think about it, a lot of times they go buy one, or they change their mind, or they go somewhere else. Like, it's a real problem. And people don't take this wrong way, but it's not affecting your business. It's affecting theirs. And I think my job here is to, is to put you on the spot and help us find a solution. I mean, they don't, they don't wanna hear that. Like, they need money. What they need, like, what, what do we need to do?
We need positions.
You need what?
Positions. We need to get more positions.
I mean, whatever it takes. We need to know.
Okay.
I don't want growth in government, but the government that we do have, I want to be working for the citizens on a timely basis.
So one, one position, two positions, I mean, I feel like you're the one who's...
Two. Two.
It's, it's, and I appreciate that, seeing, you know, your construction, John's in construction. We know that, we film every day. And I appreciate your sentiment. And we're not here to dig on you, if there are any people here to witness it. But I was a little dismayed, dismayed the other night when you brought up, said we're gonna go for another position for an animal control officer, it costs about a hundred thousand dollars. I said, I'm like, oh God, that's not gonna bring one dime into Macon County. Why are we not asking for a position in environmental? We have, I wish people could understand the importance getting this down to a week. I've asked for that for fifteen years since I've been on the board of it. It never gets there. And I don't know, it is your job. It's your job. You tell us how to get that down. And we should, we should tell you that you've got a year to get it down to a week. What do you, what do you need, Jack? And I mean, I get so frustrated with this. It's, just like a house. If somebody's wanting to buy a piece of property, and they want all the, and I, I can name you a number of pieces of property, deals that are going south, because they're not gonna wait six or eight weeks to sit into the safety system on the ten acre tract.
It ain't, it ain't just the builder, for then users, the real estate.
Really?
It's, it's every aspect of construction. I don't mind going under contract with Jackson County. If it were to cost us twenty thousand dollars to clear up our backlog, where we can at least start over fresh. You have my support there. And I'd like for you to think outside the box and just find a solution where at least we can clear that backlog and then start over. You know, if you ever want to cash more, I think that's an appropriation that I could accept.
We apply different methods, but, you know, contracting and paying for overtime. But for sustained, well, you're in on the backlog, you're gonna need positions. I need, I need positions.
And I think it's not a secret. I mean, this economy isn't, isn't going like it was last year, two years ago. Permits aren't being pulled like they were last year, two years ago. And that's a fact. I just think right now today, we need to keep, we can keep coming out of the ground for our economy. And I wish you could call Jackson and have the ground contractor, but let's at least before next month, clear our backlog. Is that, is that a possibility?
That's not possible, clear that much. That's not possible to clear that much.
How do we do? I mean, it's.
Where where we should think was the last application that they.
And there's no way to contract this out with anybody?
I mean, by the time we get it, not in a month, by the time the health directors in the other counties have to give them permission to come work in our county first of all. I got so I've got to I've got to be able to do that is have that conversation. And then once we do, we can set up the contracts. But it takes longer than thirty days to get the backlog cleared up.
It's gonna be sixty days.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, let's move. Let's try to get this.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Come on up with this guy. I see you shaking your hand over.
You know, what we have is a lot of new staff. So they have to have time to be able to do what a seasoned staff member can do. And what you're asking them to do is to to work harder. They're already working as hard as they possibly can. And when your other counties are paying more, they're they're gonna leave.
I'm gonna make sure I'm.
So you can't ask them to work any harder than they already are. They are producing the amount of work.
I want to be.
We're not.
I'm not asking anybody to work any harder. I want to give you funds that you guys can do your job better. I'm not asking anybody to go, that's that's not initially what I want to have. But I want to give you the resources that you two ladies need to make this happen. That's what I that's my pleasure to you. Nothing, there's no, you know, adverse.
No criticism of current staff.
We want to help you.
We're we're not cleaning up any of the staff. This has been an ongoing problem for years. It's not because you have new staff. This has been a problem for a long, long time.
If you're new folks, what's the issue?
So first of all, let's keep the current employees that we have, right?
Okay.
So we spend all this money training them and they usually leave. Because Macon County is very good at training people, are we not?
Oh, and which and and these are not newbies. I mean, we've got some seasoned staff, John.
John?
And Chaz.
Less than a year.
Wesley's new, but they're they're good.
They are good. They're still talking less than a year experience.
Yes.
And I hate to I hate to be this, but in my private world, and I hate to talk about careers on the board, I pledge I never do that. But you to hire a seasoned climber, you got to pay him. And I mean, you might pay him thirty-five or forty dollars an hour. My point is, I'd like for you you two to pitch this board something. You say, look, we need twenty-five thousand dollars. We need fifty thousand dollars. Like, it's that important to me. I just want to make sure I'm not asking you to double down on your workload, go in there and crack the whip. I'm saying, we recognize the fact that we don't have an experienced workforce. So now it's our job as leaders to say, let's bring in, let's import some experience. And that's what I'm asking is how do we import that experience? And let's share that Jackson County has a two-day backlog and we're at eight weeks to meet. But, you know, and 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 we'll get back to them in in another aspect.
And we also need to see the quality of work.
I don't disagree with that. I mean, this, we don't need to rush through it, but.
No, but we also need to see the quality of work that Macon County does versus other counties.
And I work in Jackson County. They do qual- I mean, they're and Jim Boyer and Tress Lake, I mean, I most that's quality.
Right.
But now, here's the thing in Jackson County, they have a full, and I'm not kicking you out. I mean, I appreciate what you do. You've been very valuable on our food and lodging and the program that we're setting, been around a long time. The thing that Jackson County, they have a full-time environmental health supervisor and her role is to assign the tasks.
I'm not gonna do that.
And Alicia keeps everything clear. If 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 something comes in this week, she's got it scheduled. She's there. She's telling Travis Montez where he's going or Travis Pender.
Right, that's fine, but these people are professionals. We have degrees. We know what we are doing. Every date changes. You cannot tell me what I'm gonna do tomorrow because tomorrow will change.
And that that continues to happen. We have the repairs and the complaints that come in that need to get addressed. And and, you know, it's, they they have a structure where they're assigning work and they make most efficient use of this.
They're at they're about a couple hours a day to pick up for tickets, whatever comes up. But if applications turned in, that thing's scheduled within a couple of days.
And they're 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 caught up. I mean, they're she's able to do that because they're caught up.
That's why they're caught up.
We had fifteen applications turned in in one day.
For?
Fifteen applications turned in in one day. I don't think you understand how much Macon County is getting in the applications.
So what can Macon County do that? Miss Jackson County's doing something like that. What can we go from them to maybe to maybe work for us here?
The number of staff that are trained.
How many how many more staff do you need?
I'm I'm asking for two.
Two.
Would not. Okay, so with two staff members, what what solution would that give us? How how much quicker would this process move along with two more staff members?
When a higher degree than training, this is not gonna happen overnight.
What if we hire seasoned staff?
You're gonna have to pay a lot of money, a lot of money. And and that's gonna be, I've worked very hard to try to get seasoned staff here. And there's a couple of things that if they're moving from another county to here and they lose that their life form insurance and some of the the benefits that they have in their county by moving here, they don't come.
If the funding was provided for those two for those seasoned staff members, how would that help move this process along?
A lot.
A lot?
Yes.
Could we hire independent contractors at the interim?
Oh, yeah.
Like, 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 Wes, I'm worried about the backlog. You know, I feel like we have, you know, multifaceted issue right here. We have trade in for long-term, which we can't hire anybody that's gonna get here out. So why not have a backlog? Hire some independent contractors, clear the backlog, hire a physician or two. And I feel like we're taking care of what's on the table. We're looking at the future.
And that's a long.
And I think.
In addition to that, I don't know how much you guys are aware of working and it's in the budget is working to get an automated, computerized software management system. And that will help.
Just listen, I feel like we're, I want, I'm talking about the here and that, like tomorrow. If I go down there tomorrow and I go apply, that's what I'm talking about. I understand the budget. That's supposed to be like a burden. It's like I'm trying to throw you everything you want. I feel like you're kind of saying, I don't know what I want.
I'll take it.
Like, why don't you follow up with county manager this week? Tell us what you need. Let's find some independent contractors local and let's not cut our backlog. I mean.
It's an independent contractor. It has to be within a county. They have to be.
Yeah, it's not a private person. It's another environmental health specialist from another county. And I can make those arrangements and I've done that in the past. And I do need the money to do that. But that's the process. We're not allowed to go get just somebody, a private person.
So if you're giving the funds, you can get that person.
I can hopefully get that person. If I can find, they have to be willing to come and do work.
So can you get the county manager, the connection, figure out what the funding is that's needed, the person that's at the board, so we can go forward?
Well, if you if you wanna give me a amount of money tonight instead of waiting so that I have to come back in another month and ask for money, I mean.
Are you asking for contract workers? Are you asking for contract workers?
Yeah, then, I mean, twenty thousand, give me twenty thousand. And that'll give me some freedom, my remainder of this fiscal year to to see who will come and do work.
I mean, I don't want to be mean. I feel like it's we're we're down to the rabbit hole. Like, remainder of the fiscal year, I'm I'm talking about the here and now. I'm not trying, like, I feel like, I don't know why it seems so simple to me. I I'll go out and hire somebody, let's clear our backlog.
You can't. They have to be connected with the county. They have to.
So there's nobody in the state of North Carolina that can come out here and pass a safety.
Unless they are a onsite specialist in a county, it is not allowed.
In a county, it doesn't have to be in Macon County.
It doesn't have to be in Macon County. You know, it's.
So if you have that, we can move in the here and now.
If they want to.
But see, we have that. We we have the contract labor in the budget in in the year before last. And then last year, the request was to take the contract labor out and put in the part-time technicians. Was the con- or put in the technicians, was the contract labor, could we not find them? Was it not working? Why did we pull it out then?
I mean, we we were more caught up at that time. It also takes a lot of time for every Jonathan's responsibility to set that up and to make sure whatever these contract workers are doing is actually going to be legit. They're getting paid a lot more money to come over here and contract work. But we want to make sure it's quality work that they're doing. And we had issues with that in the past.
So are you saying to this board that if we gave you twenty thousand dollars tonight, you could get this backlog?
I could I could try to get contract workers. I would have a a lot of money to to offer contract workers to come. Now, whether or not they come, I can't make that decision. They have to decide to want to work.
But then why wouldn't we do it for twenty thousand dollars?
Don't spend it. It just sits there. I mean, if that's.
I would rather have a, as Commissioner Young said, make the calls. This board right here is ready to help you. And in the meantime, if you can make the calls, we're gonna support getting this backlog taken care of. But in the meantime, we also need additional workforce, staff for your office. So let's get rid of the backlog and put out, um, job openings for two, um, two staff members for your office.
Are you talking about interns or you're talking about seasoned?
Oh, I don't care.
Well, if you're talking about seasons, we need to up the money.
Well, I understand. I mean, it costs more money.
Said that we would do that. So, I mean, we're looking, we're we're just trying to establish a solution. So we're not trying to become mad at it anyway. We're just trying to establish a solution that would help in the here and now. So would that take care of it? What we just.
I think for the long term, you you're gonna need to look at increasing the number of positions for the long term in order to continue to to address the backlog. In the short term, some money to go and offer contract workers to be to see if we can quickly get them to come to Macon County and clear its backlog up is, you know, all that's all the tools that we have in the back.
Well, I'm willing to help you, help us to get the general public off of our back because we hear that. And so therefore it pays your life much better, our life much better, and our community life much better with building contractors and potential home builders. So it's a win-win. So come up with a solution and let's move on.
I gotta ask you one more thing. I'm sorry, everybody is running between us. Sent a meeting yesterday with Mr. Schules and and Mr. Lynch. And look, this community is having a really big issue with mental health, all right? And I feel like, I don't know if you can still right there, but the school system is being tasked with all the Esther funds running out and and all the mental health jobs being lost. And and in my simple mind, here we have the Macon County public health syst- I mean, Macon County public school system with the school board over the schools. We have a Macon County public health system, which is, in my opinion, mental health. I feel like the the roles are being kind of, you know, blended right there. It's not the the health department's job to provide mental health to the Macon County public schools. And I'm there's no, I'm just asking the question.
Well, we're not an A, I don't know in that world what they call it, a certified agency to bill for those services.
Are we getting certifications or class? Somebody take somewhere around that.
It's it's a little bit, it's the whole agency would have to look at its structure. And to be calm and and that's a little bit of a mental health provider.
I mean, is that a big deal? I just feel like that shouldn't be the role of the of the mental, the public health department. Mental health is a part of public health.
I think what was done in the past, we have contracted with Appalachian to provide mental health services in the health department. And we have worked with Appalachian and other providers to provide mental health services in the schools. So, for example, you know, we get a part of a grant process to get, we had a mental health provider paid for. But it was contracted through Appalachian and they're set up to bill for their services through through agencies like fire and the health.
I mean, that that's the direction I'm going. I feel like there's a lot of resources that lost in Medicaid, Medicare. I just feel like you see was ahead of this board and all this rule capital needs and and, you know, annual expenses, mental health. I just feel like this is an avenue that we could tap into that could really help. I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, being you, that's fair. I just wanted to bring that up for those planes.
Let me just say this. You must began, I've talked about this on the day, I don't see, you see, but we talked about this mental health. And I guess when I went up, not knowing the full structure of the mental of the health department, I I didn't know what's the relationship when you talk about certification, because we're not certified.
And I don't think that's the right term for agents in your field that are accredited. We're not an accredited agency, mental health providers.
Yeah, that's what I'm. And that was the answer, that we could not move that the, uh, Macon County Health Department could not move in this arena of trauma, thing like that because we were not certified to provide those people.
Yeah.
That's what I found in your conversation yesterday. But there was a black supplement the health department has, the reason we have to go out here and try to find that trauma and all things, because what do they think is there? I don't know how you get it, but it's 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 black.
We have to, you know, we have to do a process, which is pretty much being, to become a ready provider. To be able to hire the providers, which is a struggle in the mental health field is looking already.
One of the things we talked about in our N O Bs, we have some sewage issues, run across the road that I drive through, and not just me, my neighbor complained about it. If you issue, we're saying, well, we can issue three of these. You have a couple of, you know, these. I talked with legal counsel about that. He said, they have them. You'll take care of them.
We've spoken recently and we are setting meetings up for that very thing.
That's true. Yes, we're setting up a meeting and we're gonna have our associate general manager, who's, we just need to go look at them and do the consult on it and build it. I'm back on the on the subject at hand as far as the money. Did do you want to make a motion about increasing the funds tonight and move forward?
Next motion, we allocate twenty thousand dollars out of fund balance.
Do the fund balance?
Out of out of fund balance.
Contingency. I'm taking out general fund contingency.
General fund contingency. Um, for, let's call it a support.
Contracted service.
Support contracted services.
No, I'll say that it it's only it's targeted for environmental health, on-site waste warning.
Exactly, Wes.
And if the other county employees or staff are not willing to come to Macon County, does that money come back to the contingency fund? Is it in their account, as you say?
It'll just roll in the fund balance to your end. I won't let them move it around. I'll spend it on other things.
Okay. I'm good.
We want to help you. Don't think that was, that's a good engagement because that's what needs to happen. And it does some real problems that we're all being pursued with. So don't take any of the.
No.
Let me ask you one question. You and I come, why are we never gonna have a full-time environmental health supervisor?
I did not want this position. But I felt like.
I'm not picking on you, Lisa. I'm just.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Our staff, I felt like they needed a leader. I could see them crumbling. So I did something that I didn't want to do.
But I know you're you're away from your family. What is the remedy? I mean, you've got that. I was environmental supervisor when I left Health Department twenty-five years ago.
Money. Nobody wants to do this for the amount of money that it's worth. I'm doing it for the I'm doing it for the other people, not for me.
That's not beating you up for that, Lisa. But you know, you've been at Long Island as long, almost, well, as long as I'm there, but.
Twenty-four years.
You gotta have a full-time leader in that department. Somebody to sit there to entertain the the clients that come in, keep the office moving. You can't do it. I mean, it's.
I'm doing it.
You're doing it, absolutely. And I appreciate you doing it. That's what I said. I wanted to compliment you on that. And I'm not beating you up.
No, I'm not. And I understand that. I just wish you understood that it's not as easy as you think it is.
I've I've been in this for thirty-five years. I know it's not easy.
Exactly, but you you ran it back in the day. It's it's different.
And I'm I'm in this business. I work. And I, I'm in this business. I work in it every day.
Yes, you do. I understand that too. We're getting the same calls that y'all are. We're getting the questions that y'all are. I'm just saying, it is not, we had it open. Nobody wanted to apply for it. And nobody was qualified. I'm, you know, I, I'm qualified. And I, and I just, I did it for them because I don't want them to leave. They need a leader.
Which anybody in house qualified for, other than you.
Tell me.
Oh, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I don't know those things.
But I don't think if, uh,
I'm only an intern. I'm only an intern supervisor.
Pardon?
I'm only an intern supervisor. If I choose, if I choose to do this, yeah, I'll go full time. It is not for certain that I want to do this.
It's, uh, she just want out of it. Uh, but we got, leadership is key to success.
And I've got the leadership.
And I'm not kicking you. I mean, you've been very, very good for Health Department. But, uh,
If you're, if you're questioning the eight dollars a week that I'm not there, I'm cooking in the town. I might be part-time. You might be paying me part-time, but I can assure you, I'm there.
But you can't do that forever. I mean, you can't do that for any extended period of time. If you're letting me help and stay here though, then.
The compensation that I'm getting is not worth it. It's right here. So.
Well, it's just, my personal viewpoint is I think that we, to have a successful environmental health program, we've got to have, got to have leadership. And I'm thankful that you filled in the gap.
She does an excellent job. Excellent. She's been, you know, there for four weeks now.
That's, that's my question too. How many part times? That, I hate to break the ice right there, but we're.
You're fine. That's a choice.
No choice.
It was a choice. I chose my family.
I, I mean, I just want to say thank you. First of all, I mean, look, it is ten o'clock and, and this is, this is a good discussion, so. And a lot of this stuff I don't know about. I mean, I'm in my own role and I sit in an oversight role and I hate to say it, but you guys know a lot more than I do. And I'm, I'm here to take it as a, a resource, trying to get you a resource to help the community. That's really my role here. Thanks for your time. Thanks for what you do. And I, I'm here.
Can you rule out the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say the job or take note.
No, no, no. Twenty, twenty thousand dollar supplement is needed. Their budget for environmental services.
From general, from general fund contingency.
Just give me a second there.
I second it, it is.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thanks.
Thank you later.
And as far as the fees, we'll come back to that.
I am not, I am not, I mean, I'm here to, Mrs. Melanie, where you're from the Board of Elections to ask you for fifty thousand dollars to conduct this second primary. And, uh, unfortunately, the costs associated with this are fixed. We have to operate all the precincts. We have to have at least three people at each precinct. And I suspect we won't have three thousand people vote against us. But that's not, we can't do anything about that. All we can do is man the precincts, buy the ballots, put the people out there and get the votes. That's it, fellas. If you got questions, we'll answer. By the way, Sugar Board's got four hundred and eighty-six registered voters. And just for information, four hundred and seventy-six of those are Republicans or unfulfilled. Just, just saying.
Well, I have, I've written down a few questions, so.
Really? She'll answer them.
I noticed in the bottom of what was presented.
Yes, yeah.
It says.
Yeah.
You stated the Board of Elections Office was ADA compliant, you could have the early voting in your office and save the tax pay of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And staff would work normal hours.
That's all right.
What is needed to bring your office up to ADA compliant and approximate the cost?
We have to move. We can't, we can't be in the basement. It's not ADA. We also can't have security measures, uh, to enter the voting place. And we've been, Paul has heard this before, and Gary has heard this before. We've been complaining about this for years. Uh, I wanted to take part of the Southwestern Community College Building out adjacent to the, uh, this is just me personally, adjacent to the courthouse there, uh, and put them over on the Southwestern Community College campus. That didn't go anywhere, so. But just answer your question, John. We're in the basement. Of course, that's not ADA. And you can't have security as we have it in accordance, which needs to be there.
So that, but that brings more of the reason to do, like I said in the past, is we need to look, this board needs to look at a justice center and move the two offices out of the basement and relocate, uh, these offices so that, uh, that we are, I mean, this is a lot of money. I mean.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you, and you look at every election. Yeah. If you do two primaries, you're talking significant money every two years. And, and this stuff is not cheap. I, I bet you somewhere in the, they wrote it, three hundred and thirty thousand, something like that, Lori. Something like that. And this is not a cheap process. And it's mainly people and paper.
And I mean, you're lucky for fifty thousand dollars for this special election and, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. And we've looked at ways to try to cut that down. And we may be able to cut corners somewhere else. But we'd rather have the money so we can give it back to you than not have the money. Other questions or comments? There's none of remarks.
I mean, the community building don't work?
I'm sorry?
What goes wrong with the community building?
Well, that's basically Paul and we're having early voting offsite. So when you get into the offsite, which is out of my office, then it goes to different hours. Then I have to go by the seven thirty a.m. to seven thirty p.m. and open at least once the last Saturday. If I was in my office and it was ADA compliant, we could use the employees that we have inside our office and we open the hours that the courthouse is open, eight to five.
If the community.
The last Saturday.
Same, we put, if the community center were our office, it would work. It has to be technically be our office.
That's where it needs to be. The community building will all be the VA and the local exchange.
You won't get any argument from me on that. But you have to talk to the county commissioners about that. I know support.
The only part that I have a problem with the Southwestern of here, because Derek cannot look at that, and that's fine. And we could have moved over there and we probably could have had early voting. But you guys know how courts are here now and what that parking lot looks like on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's not enough parking between the courts, employees, and then to do early voting, especially in a present year.
It is negative, although I, twenty years ago, we did early voting downstairs in the basement because we didn't worry about this stuff. But we're not twenty years ago.
Issue change, they take the thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars, yes, sir.
Or you don't have the election.
Uh, we have to have the election.
Oh, I thought you did. I thought you said.
I was asking you to say.
Funding, funding, Lori.
John, the money's not standing.
It's the budget.
The money goes back if we don't.
The budget amendment was in the package. It's coming on fund balance.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
And I meant to mention this earlier. Go, go ahead and do your vote. I'm sorry. Here. I do want to appreciate, express my appreciation to all of you around the table here, um, particularly Derek and Lori, who've, uh, helped us budget-wise for years here. And we'll miss Paul, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, too.
And good night.
Thank you.
Take it around. I say you're rotary, you want rotary.
Pass this party down.
I wish I would have committed not a clock.
Yes, um, so Mr. Higgin, you want to explain, uh, what you would like to purchase at Manahela and Devontae? Uh, and then the next to Manahela School, Robin Cochran has a piece of property to sell for ninety thousand dollars that I believe the county would like to use for the school system to install a septic system upon that property. Um, did I summarize that correctly? And so in, um, Ms. during Mrs. Cochran have agreed to sell those, all that property, which is, uh, didn't write it down according to the actual deed I had, but it's approximately, uh, a little over three acres. Uh, for ninety thousand dollars, there is a house on that property, um, that I think that they would like to take the metal off of. So we put that in and with the, um, in the contract, if they would like to take the metal off of the roof, um, prior to closing. Um, and so you have for your consideration an offer to purchase contract from the Cochran's for ninety thousand dollars. Um, we would do, have due diligence through May thirtieth with the closing of June thirtieth unless everybody can be on the same page earlier, in which case we can close earlier. And if the board is in approval with that, I can get started on the title search to purchase that property.
The contingency there was that, uh, if we ever pour the house down, they would like to take the metal roof off. And you had addressed that. You said, well, if it's ten years from now, we decide it's earned now, the rate is low. So.
So we go ahead and have them, if they want the roof to take it now. I mean, if they want to take the metal, then they need to take it before we close because.
That would mean that we have to have a house down.
Boards change on, things happen and stuff falls through. So we would not, in the deed itself, we wouldn't have that provision about runs the metal on the roof. So we've just agreed that they, if they want the metal, they need to get it now.
If you can work a motion out of that, thank you. Uh, and, and, and I'm very appreciative of the Cochran family. They, they've been patient uh, in waiting on us to make our mind up. The only caveat to that is that once this property is acquired, then the consultant, whether it's Mountain Soils or LRM or whoever, need to proceed. The property they've got right now that we're buying, we can put a rear prepared action system. It's going to be cheaper than what they've imposed. We're going to get rid of the discharge permit into the Nahtetah River. But there's some adjoining property that if we had it in a small piece of it, we could put on a more conventional system, a chamber system instead of a drill. So, and I've been talking with Richard and with Mountain Soils, we do a lot of work together. We're not partners, but said you need to take this thing over. There's no problem. So the school system or in our system that's complement to design a system or get us this board in the future, we'll invest in that. So my motion is to purchase property.
And also.
Say.
Also part of the motion, I would recommend we'll have to do a budget amendment. That way we've got everything lined up. You know, if we get past the due diligence, we're ready to close. Um, ninety thousand is the property purchased, but Eric was saying maybe about four thousand for title search, attorney's fees, et cetera. Title insurance. So, um, if you wouldn't mind adding to your motion, a budget amendment for ninety four thousand on fund balance. And again, if something happens, this falls through, that money just stays in fund balance. We don't need the whole four thousand for all those extra fees. It just stays in fund balance. But makes me feel more comfortable if you're making this motion to buy the property, go ahead and amend the budget. And so that way we're ready to roll.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm like, and, and again, I want to thank the Cochrans for giving us this opportunity. This is, this is a gift to us. That system, they say, has been failing for twenty, twelve years. Let's get it fixed. We wouldn't get it fixed.
And as part of the discussion, if I could add, um, Paul, since you will no longer be running point on this, um, it's kind of my thought that, that this is going to be the school septic system so that they would actually need to run point with Mountain Soils to have that happen, just because that's going to be their baby to, to take on once we get this per, this property purchased.
Yes.
And so we'll turn that over, do the county to run it once, once that property is purchased.
Yeah, and your school system.
That's what I meant. School system, that one.
All right, we got a motion. We got a second. More discussion.
Let's talk about the Westbury Park. Everybody's familiar with where it is up there. So we've got eggs, water feature down there that the kids love to play in in the summertime. There's seven heads that shoot up water to different levels and different heights. Go out and watch the kids sometime. It's a ball. They let it. Plus it's free for the kids. Sometimes that's all the kids got. It's just free. Anyway, the thing is, we got, excuse me, we got two water plants to Westbury Park, Westbury Park. One goes to the pavilion, picnic pavilion, and another one goes to the water feature only. Now, for the water feature only, we didn't, we didn't turn it on in twenty twenty because of the, so I don't have any thing for that. But for eighteen and nineteen, the water bill for that feature alone was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Pretty chump. And I can't get a town, excuse me, they charge their rates and rates are comparable with everybody else. They're tied to that. That's not what I'm here for. But then in May of twenty-three, we paid a hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is just flat rate for having a town, whether it be used or not. In June of twenty-three, the bill was forty-four eighty-five, a thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. And in July twenty-three, it was twelve thousand thirty-two dollars because we had a leak between the town's meter and our feature. And it cost us pretty good. We questioned if the town could reduce that. And Ms. Liz Le- Leffler asked me the question, the town asked if they could, and they were like they could not. They could not reduce that. So then in August, we paid the twelve thousand dollars, along with four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three for our August bill. So we was getting in the money. And I did not just recommend this continued this. That's not long here. I'm just thinking that maybe we should build a well down there and use it all the water. The water we get from the town, that's all it's used for on that meter. It goes up in there, that one with the ramp is a small. So it is, that's all it does. If we could drill a well to do that and disconnect from that meter, looks to me like we could save quite a bit of expense in doing that. Now, is it legal for those to do that? Because it's seawater. Uh, General Statute eighty-seven, Daxton, he said, the law says we can get a well permit as long as for irrigation or other non-potable uses and don't connect it to the town. And this attorney tells me otherwise. That's what I agree with. So applied for a well permit, we got one down there. I asked for some prices. Holland came back with a hose line that went through a hundred feet. It cost about ten thousand dollars. And what I'd ask is that you let us drill a well down there to see if we can get enough water to do this. Now, if all the heads are running at the same time, it takes eighty-one gallons of water. But the way we program it, that doesn't happen. This one, that one, this one, that one, this one, that one. But we got to have a pretty good well for that. Either we get a real strong well, we just push straight to it, we need a tree, ultravox or something that makes it, that did. If we don't get a strong well, we may have to put some storage system. What I'm asking for now is just drill a well and see what we get. And then we'll know where to go from there. And this could save us, I don't know how much money, say, ten thousand dollar well or a twelve thousand dollar leak for one month.
Reg, on average, uh, it's thirteen, fifteen thousand without a leak a year is about what we pay. On that. So you pay for it a year.
So you pay for it a year.
Jeff, you priced it in Olive and Crane?
They did return the call before we didn't move.
What are you in contract? We've got three people in town. I thought they'd be all the...
We'll, we'll, we'll get everybody to just price on that. That's just proof, legislatureal purposes.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Have your heart on that. Jack, I think we proceed. What do you need here?
Camera.
What do you need is...
Some money.
I just need y'all to...
Camera.
And still give them, and just give them a little.
Oh, okay.
A budget amendment. Is Sam gonna cover it, or do we need a little more?
How does that not exceed ten, and if we need to go deeper, I'll holler.
You're gonna need to know something. I mean, they put the bit in the ground, and this time around, you need to know something right then. They're not gonna pull that bed out and then put it back in.
Say that again.
So they go to drill, and you need more than ten thousand dollars. That's in the ground. You need money then.
They, well, I can't imagine personally, I've drilled wells years ago for Head and Brother. I can't imagine we're kidding me to get a well like...
Then we're supposed to know all deep, right? Off, right, right there.
Yeah, well, it's between a swamp and the river.
Don't mean to, yeah.
So I, I think we're gonna find water.
I'd really draw a hole upside the river.
Well, we may have one too. I can guarantee it. Like I said, you can pull them up, put them up, make those holes out.
All right, what's the motion? Make a motion, we'll allow Mr. Deck Morgan to enter into a drilling well at West's playground for ten thousand dollars.
The company budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
For ten thousand from general fund balances?
Yes, ma'am. And the other section? Second. Second. Further discussion? I wish we'd done this about ten years ago, Sam.
Should have.
All in favor, Greg, Greg, right here? He's dead.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
It works all time in the morning.
I see the move. Senator Johnson, any, uh, head... All hours, lower, consider routine will be enacted by one motion. Anything in there we can pull out, poke out. And the Senator Johnson, okay, we said, Lori, we have a motion.
I would ask for a copy of what public record was disposed of in Lake Council place.
That's in your pocket? The description of that is in your pocket?
It says, the two thousand, you don't tell me what was disposed at...
It's the tickets that they get at the, at the gate when you come in.
Okay.
Were they, were you paying for what you're bringing in at the time?
And we make a motion, Senator Johnson, the...
Yes, I'll make a motion that we...
I got a second. What you...
That party, Senator Johnson, as presented.
It's second. And for further discussion, um, all in favor of the vote? Uh, the informants, uh, Mr. Josh Young, he's on the planning board. I know Josh Young, the informant, I am planning board.
I did see Caleb Gibson back there, but I don't see him anymore. Um, we're always thankful, gratifications to voluntary boards. Planning board is, uh, very important.